I'd like to call this special meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I guess, you know, we'll remain standing for the invocation. There's nobody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them wisdom, encourage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
President.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanez.
President.
All right, we have two absences tonight, Mrs. Sarowski and Mr. Yanez. Council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
We moved in support. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This is the yearly strategic planning session and we have a number of presentations tonight and I'm excited to hear them. We're going to be talking about our objectives for the upcoming year and as I said, we'll have six or seven very, very insightful, interesting presentations tonight. So for that, I'm going to hand it over to our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel, and Mark, I'll let you emcee it from here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As you indicated, every time of around this time of year, every year we conduct this strategic planning session, which is one of many ways that we get feedback from the city council on various community initiatives. The timing of strategic planning is important because it is a prelude to the city's annual budget process and depending on feedback and direction from city council this evening, many of the initiatives will be included in the city's fiscal year 21 budget proposal, which is being formulated as we speak. The strategic plan also serves as a guide for larger policy-oriented initiatives. As you hear the presentation this evening, you'll hear that once again, our actions are centered on our all-important visioning 2030 plan and its guiding principles. And Mayor, similar to past years, we have six directors and managers who'll be speaking about exciting initiatives planned for the future this evening. We respectfully request that the comments be reserved until we conclude and that will provide a more productive discussion. So let's get started. The past two decades can best be described as a period of survival and a period of growth. We survived the Great Recession thanks to a solid financial plan. We then embarked on a massive investment in infrastructure and quality of life services. I think almost all would agree, the investments over the past few years have been transformative and have set the city on a course of prosperity. As we look forward to the future, it is vitally important that we do all that we can and all that is possible to protect the investments made throughout the city. We must also do all that is possible, be good stewards of the city's green infrastructure. With this in mind, the first portion of strategic planning this evening will focus on sustainability. Assistant City Manager Jeff Bahorski will start out leading this discussion and then he'll be followed by our DPW Director, Mike Moore, our Parks and Recreation Director, Kyle Langlois, our city planner, Chris McCloy. So now, Mayor, I would like to introduce Mr. Bahorski, who will kick off.
Mr. Bahorski.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, and good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My colleagues and I are privileged to have the opportunity to present on the subject of sustainability. Every year, Mrs. Zarko comments that strategic planning is her favorite meeting of the council year, so there is some pressure to deliver tonight, but I am very confident that this topic carries great potential for each council member to leave a profound legacy through a commitment to a sustainable Sterling Heights. So exactly what is sustainability? As defined by the United Nations World Commission on Environment and Development, sustainability focuses on meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. Now while this definition is useful for starting the conversation, I much prefer the following quote, which captures the activism of sustainability. Sustainability is not a goal to be reached, but a way of thinking, a way of being, a principle to be guided by. And our commitment to this new way of thinking and new way of being cannot be short-term. By noted by a preeminent, sustainable architect, sustainability takes forever, and that's the point. Now, the commitment to a long-range plan is best exemplified by the city's 2030 visioning plan. I would submit to you that the city's bold vision for itself as a vibrant, inclusive community that is safe, aggressive, and distinctive is not attainable unless there is a commitment to sustainability. In other words, we will not have well-maintained and desirable neighborhoods, plentiful leisure and recreational opportunities, abundant pathways for biking and walking, well-maintained and aesthetically pleasing roads and green spaces, attractive commercial centers, or high-tech and emerging industries unless Sterling Heights embraces sustainability. Our pursuit of these guiding principles, though laudable, will be hollow if while attaining them, we degrade our environment, burden our children and grandchildren, and ultimately make Sterling Heights a less desirable place to live. I am very confident that none of us want that to be our legacy. Rest assured, council, that you will not be alone in a commitment to sustainability. City administration recently completed and issued a report called Creating a Sustainable Sterling Heights, which identifies the following key areas to be addressed by the city's sustainability initiative. Starts with natural assets management. This section of the report addresses the need for preservation and enhancement of trees, waterways, open space, and parks. While the city's recent progress in rehabilitating the Clinton River is yielding great returns, there is so much more that can and should be done to improve the natural assets that enhance our health and well-being. As you will hear shortly, more work needs to be done to improve the city's tree canopy. The time to start that effort is now. Citizen mobility. Imagine a Sterling Heights where people are less reliant on driving their car due to an abundance of non-motorized options to move about our community. Where people seek out abundant trails to experience nature while walking, running, cross-country skiing, and riding a bike. Later in this presentation, you will hear even more about this exciting sustainability topic. Sustainable development and land use. As a city that is largely built out, the potential for implementing sustainable practices for undeveloped tracts of land is limited. However, because sustainability is focused on the long term, the city must prepare for smart redevelopment that corrects for some of the mistakes in the past. Implementing mixed-use, higher-density developments is not only good economically, but ecologically. And lastly, environmental citizenship. While Sterling Heights has done a decent job of being a good steward of the environment, you will learn tonight that there are market challenges which are significantly affecting our ability to properly dispose of consumer-generated waste. A sustainability plan to navigate these difficult times in the recycling industry is critical both in the short and long term. Increasing the amount of recyclable materials being used in the city and improving our energy efficiency through new technologies are essential components of sustainability. So my appeal to you this evening is let's commit to creating a sustainable Sterling Heights. Let's take that first step in the journey of a thousand miles. This will not be an easy process, but nothing worth doing ever is. Please pause for a moment and think about the possibility that we can create a sustainable Sterling Heights that is no longer susceptible to the devastation of an emerald ash borer or the challenge of redeveloping a contaminated property. It's possible if we are guided by the principles of sustainability and truly embrace this new way of thinking and new way of being. Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give the floor to our Public Works Director, Mike Moore, who will update the
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city manager, city attorney, and residents. This evening, I'd like to address the concerns in the recycling industry and Sterling Heights' plan to sustain a successful recycling program. So why recycle? First and foremost, a cleaner Sterling Heights. Recycling is a daily activity for millions of Americans and a great way to protect our environment and stimulate our economy. Recycling saves resources, prevents pollution, supports public health, and creates jobs. Recycling removes solid waste from entering landfills where space is diminishing, and best of all, it's easy. Fun fact, producing recycled white paper creates 74% less air pollution and 35% less air pollution than producing paper from scratch. There may be no better time to research, plan, and implement best management practices in the city's recycling efforts than now due to the current market conditions in the recycling industry. Many challenges have arisen in the recycling industry and you can see from this chart here that the value of each commodity has severely decreased over the years and continues to do so, and that's mostly because of two reasons. One being China's no longer taking anything, or as it's been termed, China sort, and then the other is contamination. So what is China sort? In 2018, China shut its doors to any contaminated recycling material coming in from the United States and other countries. So they reduced their 3% allowable contamination down to 0.5% and put a complete ban on mixed paper. So on the graph, you can see on the right-hand side here, there no longer is mixed paper exports from the United States to China, and the value has severely decreased of all the commodities. Same with this graph here. Pretty drastic that materials are not leaving this country, going to China, and it's creating a backlog of recycling material. The second reason is contamination. These are two pictures of our recycling centers. The picture on the left is a metal recycling dumpster. You can see that one bad actor threw a bunch of wood in there, and on the right-hand side, it's a container that's supposed to be glass that another bad actor threw plastic and paper. So the unfortunate thing with these two pictures is that all those folks who took the time to recycle and do it right, this entire container was now taken to the landfill. Nothing was recycled. Did you know 50% of Michiganders mistakenly believe plastic bags are recyclable? They are not recyclable. Take them to your local Kroger. They can be recycled there. The photo on the right-hand side is what's on top of every cart, and you can see no on the right-hand side, plastic bags. But this still isn't getting home to the residents. Did you know 70% of Michiganders are unaware that failing to rinse items poses a risk of contaminating everything in their bin? So for example, if you want to throw out your Dole or your Minute Maid orange juice, and there's still this much orange juice in there, you have to dump it out, rinse it out. Otherwise, when that goes in the truck and it's crushed, it gets orange juice all over everything, and whatever it gets on is essentially contaminated and useless. And here's why prices have gone up as well too, and this is why plastic bags are not allowed. It shuts down the MRF, MRF, multiple material recycling facilities. So anytime I have to shut down, it increases cost, drives the value of each commodity down. So we have these challenges. So what is Sterling Heights going to do? What's our plan? Our sustainability plan, a couple options, is promote our recycling events a little better. Community Relations does a good job, but we think we can do a better job in the near future. We do have our annual events such as hazardous household waste, paper shredding, and maybe we can hold these events two times annually. Most importantly though, I think what we have to do is reach the public. We need a very thorough public education plan. Of that are a couple items. One thing we discussed that we can implement very quickly is a link on our city website that when residents are looking to dispose of an item that they're unaware of where they should take it, we can have a link on the city webpage. Click here, type in exactly what you're looking to dispose of, whether it's paper, tin, glass, hit the search feature, and then it should give them a bunch of different areas they can take this material to. So that can be instituted very quickly to educate everyone. Direct mail. We've done this in the past with great success. Currently, Community Relations is working on this for the census, and we've had good luck with this with the water quality report. So once census is completed, maybe April, May, we can start working on a mailer of recycling information. That's the do's and the don'ts, and a bunch of information on the different options for residents to recycle. How about a survey? We've had good luck with that in the past. Maybe we have a survey that we send out to residents and ask them what are their desires in recycling? What do they know? What don't they know? We take this survey back and then we can modify our public education plan based on the survey results. Some communities have found great success having a cart inspection program. What that is, is employees would actually inspect the contents of a recycling cart. So on collection day, a, let's say, part-time employee would go around to said collection areas on that service day, open up the container, look inside the cart, and determine if the proper items are in the cart. If not, they can leave a tag on it that says, oops, you didn't recycle correctly, or thanks for recycling correctly, you did a great job. So maybe there's an opportunity for us to do that, and after one or two or three oops tags, maybe we don't service that container until they start recycling properly, which then reduces the Eagle in the state of Michigan want to double Michigan's recycling rate to 30% by 2025, and they've created these little guys here, the Recycling Raccoons, and their big motto is know it before you throw it. So why can't we, we don't always have to recreate the wheel. You know, if Eagle and the state are pushing this, we are as well too. We can use a lot of their information, social media, direct mailers, all their education, and push that out on our platforms as well. And lastly, collaboration. I think it would be a great idea for us to get into the local schools, maybe elementary, maybe junior high, and not only try to educate the students, but maybe there's a way to, you know, give them some fun ideas to take home, to do recycling programs with their parents, and start educating them as well of the importance of recycling. So these are great ideas, but how are we going to pay for this stuff? Well, luckily for us, there are a couple grant opportunities. So right now, through Eagle and the recycling partnership, there is $150,000 grant, which could be used for the aforementioned tagging of carts and/or improvements to the recycle drop-off center, such as replacing some gating, security cameras, things of that. And a second grant opportunity is for the purchase of recycled carts. If you look on the bottom right-hand side, you'll see our actual program is an opt-in recycling program, and if we're successful in receiving this grant, we potentially could have $300,000 to purchase carts. If for whatever reason, in the near future, our recycling program was modified, and just by way of example, Strategy 1, a universal curbside recycling program, there's an opportunity here to receive a million-dollar grant to purchase carts. And let's not forget, there's always an opportunity to modify the contract. I've spoken with GFL on multiple occasions. They're very interested in having a conversation if we were to choose to do so. Doesn't mean we have to. It means that it's on the table. So if we're to modify the contract, maybe we could get an even further enhanced recycling program, possibly reduce the cost of what it is now, or even create some kind of incentive program for those who choose to do the curbside recycling. And last but not least, we need to be able to adapt to the ever-changing recycling industry. Through our public education program, we can inform residents of materials no longer accepted, like a specific grade of plastic, now that we have the resources to communicate with them. When the industry thrives again, we will be ready to reinvest in the infrastructure to secure our investment and sustain the next recycling concern. So understanding our challenges, having a plan, securing funding, and being adaptable, we are sure to succeed in making Sterling Heights a sustainable community for recycling. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. Now I would like to introduce Kyle Engelis, Parks and Rec Director, to discuss our natural resources and the non-motorized transportation
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, and all gathered here tonight. This evening's topic, sustainability, is one that really touches almost every aspect of the Parks and Recreation Department. Inherent to our department, we already are contributing to the sustainability of our community by having open green spaces and undeveloped forested land. These features help minimize the city's carbon footprint by providing cleaner air for our residents to breathe, and not being a developed property, which likely would use a variety of natural resources. This land is also native habitat for a variety of wildlife species, sustaining a vast ecosystem that is rare to find in a city as built out as Sterling Heights. Water quality has also been a priority of our department and the city as a whole, as we have spent a lot of effort cleaning and rerouting the Clinton River so that water can flow and trash does not pile up. As we know, free-flowing water is nature's own way of cleaning itself. Also, the Parks and Recreation Department made a conscious decision to use a recirculating water system with a splash pad construction, saving thousands of gallons of water daily. I just want to take this opportunity to note that our department continues to operate in a manner that contributes to sustainability in more of a non-traditional sense, which is human sustainability. Providing park amenities and a full catalog of programs contributes to our residents living healthier, active, and enjoyable lives. This most obviously takes the form of having active parks, walking paths, and buildings with programs, but also comes in the form of classes at our senior center, which helps our 50 and older population to sustain a strong mental, physical, and independent lifestyle as they age in place. Lastly, minimizing the use of energy and new raw materials has been a priority for the city, which has really come to the forefront with some of our recent development projects. In regards to the new community center that is set to open in just over a month, I am proud to report that we are the first city-owned building to have an electric vehicle charging station installed, which can accommodate two vehicles. Forecasting potential demand, we also have installed wiring and prepped the area for a second charging station that can be installed in the future once electric vehicles become, become more prevalent in society. We also are using a variety of materials that are considered sustainable green products, such as recycled glass countertops, as you see here, bio-based acoustic ceiling tiles, and zero to low VOC coatings, which means that our coatings, like paint, minimally contribute to decreased air quality or not at all when applied to a surface. In fact, as you can see on the screen, many of the main products used have various levels of recycled content and are themselves recyclable too. But the energy efficiency really shines through in other areas. The community center is being built with state-of-the-art options, such as our rooftop HVAC units, which are the highest efficiency models available and have a very sophisticated control system. The windows are tinted glass, low E and insulated with thermal brakes in the frame system to prevent thermal transmission, and plumbing fixtures are low water usage with automatic functions. The community center, as well as the nature center, and more than half of the senior center, feature all LED lighting, with the nature center being the first fully converted city-owned building in our inventory. I note too that the construction of the new DPW headquarters, and renovations to the library, city hall, police department, and the court will also include conversions from traditional fluorescent bulbs to LED alternatives. Speaking of the new Public Works facility, you can see on this photo, a very solid list of different types of sustainable components that are involved with this project. One of the ones that I feel is most impressive to talk about is that staff and architects elected to use and reuse a significant section of our existing metal structure on that building, which minimized the use of raw materials and conserved financial resources as well. Another current example of this practice is the renovation of the previous Parks and Grounds Division office on Clinton River Road, where efforts are underway to rehab and repurpose the building to better support the needs of multiple city departments. While we are doing some great things on the sustainability front, there are still some large-scale concepts that remain unsolved, two of which I would like to highlight this evening as being priorities at the forefront of a sustainability plan. First, as you see on the screen, is natural resources management. As has been brought to light on multiple occasions, the city is home to approximately 1,000 acres of parks and green space, including open space, forested lands, developed parks, and various water areas, some of which today are in danger due to current maintenance practices and factors outside of our control that can be resolved with better management. We have a number of green space areas that are being mowed on a weekly basis to continue to keep up the freshly manicured look, but mowing does not serve a true purpose in these areas because they are not actively used. Island Park and Meadowview Park are just two generally undeveloped parks that are experiencing bank erosion due to their proximity to waterways. Changing our practice to no-mow zones along some of the banks, coupled with strategic plantings of native wildflowers and grasses, can stop the erosion, create new habitats for animals, and save the city thousands of dollars annually. Some examples of this for me to show, at Island Park, this is a picture of Island Park. You can see the banks. If you look closely, you can see a drop-off from where the grass is to where the water leads, sorry, the sand leads into the water. You can see how erosion is really taking place there. This next picture would be really our concept for what a no-mow zone would look like, which you can see is essentially the entire perimeter of the park. And in this picture, you can kind of get a feel for what a no-mow zone and some wildflowers and grasses would look like on the, on the bank of that park. So having those native plants actually fortifies the ground, so as water continues to wash up, it provides stability to the ground in those areas. For Meadowview Park, here's another picture. As you can see up towards the top of the photo, you can see how steep the bank really is from the drain washing it away. Again, here's a side view of what our concept would look like for no-mow zones. And again, here's a picture of what that might look like in real, in real life if you were to see a no-mow zone with some native plantings as well. I do also expect that the same practice could be used very effectively along stretches of the Clinton River, Nelson Park, and Nature Trails as well, but we'd like to start certainly with Island Park and Meadowview Park first. Also part of this plan is the mitigation of non-native wildlife known as invasive species. Invasive species are devastating to the local landscape, are severe nuisance, and are very difficult to eradicate. Sustainability in this form manifests itself in an invasive species mitigation plan. Although there are likely Although there are likely more that we have yet to discover, the Parks and Recreation Department has come across close to ten different invasive species to date, with the most common being fragmites, buckthorn, garlic mustard, and Japanese knotwood. As you can see, if you look closely in the photos, these invasive plants can quickly take over an area and render it useless. In most instances, the elimination of these invasive plants cannot be done by general landscape companies. Rather, we must find companies that specialize in this type of work, which can be a costly asset to the budget, but are less costly than doing anything, or not doing anything and losing our natural habitats. To date, our Department of Public Works has been successful in using a contractor to treat fragmites at ponds throughout the city, most noticeably at Seventeen Mile and Shainer, but the Parks and Recreation Department has yet to expand this program further. The second concept of sustainability I would like to touch on today is non-motorized transportation and more specifically connectivity between our parks. We are currently in the final years of our first-ever non-motorized master plan, and while we are making some progress, there is so much more to do in order to provide ways for our residents and visitors to traverse the city without using traditional methods of transportation. The vision of the Parks and Recreation Department is to connect all five of our major parks with a non-motorized network of trails, as you can see in red on the map. For those who might not be able to see here as close of a look, it's kind of a square in the middle, you can see the green marks our major parks, there's a red square that kind of connects all of those together. This process could be completed with hike bike trails, bike lanes, paved shoulders, and other forms of transportation depending on the final location plan for how this network would be installed. Sidewalks can also be a viable means for non-motorized transportation, but they are less than ideal in their current configuration of five feet wide when it comes to higher volumes of use and mixed varieties of use. From a Parks and Recreation and non-motorized transportation perspective, sidewalks would need to be at least six feet wide, and eight feet wide would be even more appropriate for accessibility. In actuality, some grants will not fund a trail, walkway, or path unless the newly constructed areas are at least ten feet wide, which meets universally accessible guidelines. Currently, only two of our major parks are connected, which would be Dodge and Farmstead Park, and a third, Baumgartner Park, could be added to that list in the next couple of years if the Ironbell Trail Route that was introduced by the county just a couple of months ago actually comes to fruition. If we were to provide a network of trails like this connecting our major parks, what would that mean? First, this would be a great win for environmental sustainability. A trail system like this would reduce the carbon footprint, as people will have a safe and effective way to traverse to all areas of the city without having to use motor vehicles. Second, fiscal sustainability. This network of trails would now be sufficient to support a true bike-sharing program, which would likely bring in new revenue to the city as well as a for-profit business. In addition, non-motorized transportation is a more cost-effective way for our residents to traverse the city, and it is not out of the question to think that less vehicles on the road could equal a reduction in maintenance costs and a longer period between road reconstruction. Third would be health sustainability. Providing a network for non-motorized mobility in this capacity will encourage our residents to exercise more and be healthier, sustaining their longevity on this earth. According to the National Recreation and Park Association, people with increased access to a park or trail are twenty-five percent more likely to exercise and use those amenities three days per week. Going back and looking at the vision of connecting our major parks, this network of trails would bring thousands of people closer to exercise opportunities, which correlates to a healthier community. In closing, the Parks and Recreation Department is pleased to be already contributing to the sustainability of our city and our residents, and we look forward to being an important link in the chain of enhanced sustainability moving forward. I thank you for your time today and for allowing me a chance to share our vision. This time, it's my pleasure to introduce our city planner, Mr. Chris McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilor, Mr. Vanderpoel, for the opportunity to speak tonight. So tonight I would like to talk to council about the importance of tree preservation and tree planting within the city, simply said, what makes up the city's tree canopy, including some of the efforts that have been made to this point and some of the potential efforts moving forward. As you've already heard previously from those who have spoke before me, all the things that we do here in the city, it can be traced back to the city's 2030 Vision Plan. In part, the Vision Plan describes the city as having the following: well-maintained, aesthetically pleasing roads and green spaces, successful, vibrant, and attractive commercial centers with unique offerings and focal points that are both public and private to serve as destinations for residents and visitors. In their own specific ways, each of these tenants can be seen as, at least in part, as a foundation for the city's tree preservation efforts moving forward. The benefits of preserving trees and increasing tree plantings, the city's overall tree canopy are far-reaching and include reductions in overall soil erosion, stormwater impacts, even the potential for flooding, water consumption, reducing the watering needs for long-term usage, energy consumption through the use of passive solar impacts for heating and cooling, savings can be in the double digits in terms of savings costs over time. Even things such as traffic speeds and accident rates can be reduced by enclosing the roadway and creating a more psychological effect to slow down traffic and make them drive more carefully. Some studies suggest that this can almost reach ten miles an hour in terms of speed Improvements in air quality, animal habitat, biodiversity, happiness and stress reduction, as crazy as that sounds, and overall quality of life issues. Increases in property values, typically increases property values ten to fifteen percent or more in most cases. Ability to sell property, treed areas typically sell before and at a premium compared to those than a non-treed area. Most realtors, actually ninety-eight percent of them according to one study, say that a treed area strongly to moderately impact the sale of a house. Commercial spending, treed shopping areas will typically yield more sales per square foot than those commercial areas that are void of trees, typically all the way up to ten percent additional sales per square foot for a treed area. Positive community perception, much like that those live in a community with extensive tree coverage are happier, those that view that community also view it in a much better light. Generally said, total benefits for a tree planting, the U.S.D.A. suggests that over two times that are brought back to the community itself. These are some of the representative images from Green Macomb that the city is a part of in terms of their endorsements of overall tree canopy preservation. So the Foundation for Ensuring Long-Term Tree Canopy was continued in the development of the city's Master Land Use Plan that was adopted in early 2017. The master plan talks about the need for green spaces as part of place-making initiatives, the indication that sustainability is a key theme for the entire plan, and the development of forestry plan as a goal for the Infrastructure and Community Facilities Goals and Objectives section, which also includes a goal for enhancement of the road rights of way through extensive tree plantings. Again, these ideas and concepts are working in unison with the city's 2030 Vision Plan. The Master Land Use Plan, that work led immediately into the development of a completely overhauled set of ordinances that dealt with landscaping and planting requirements on non-residential sites within the city. The city previously had limited landscaping requirements, which included requirements for street trees and parking lot trees, and that was not even applicable to our industrial sites. The city now has enhanced planting standards to include additional street frontage, greenbelt plantings, building foundation plantings, parking lot tree standards that apply to all districts, and even enhanced landscape feature requirements. These new planting standards are paired with the city's longstanding tree preservation requirements that are designed to preserve good quality existing trees onsite while still allowing economically viable development. The changes to the planting standards along with the city's preservation requirements have yielded hundreds of additional trees being planted and preserved within the city as compared to previous requirements. These standards have led to developments that have looked like this. So moving forward, also around that time, the city took additional initiatives to increase the number of plantings that were occurring throughout the city's rights of way and public properties by investing heavily in the public planting program. Monies from this variety of sources were used to enhance the city's overall landscaping. This included subdivision streets, plantings along major roadways, significant plantings as part of major road projects, and the city's public building projects. You can see on the different funding sources here, a sample of them through DPW plantings, through general budget allocations as well as grant applications, recreating recreation trees that were planted, CDB appropriations, and these are the results of some of those Tree plantings by section, these are some of the areas that have been touched by DPW as part of their tree planting program within the subdivisions themselves. These are some of the specific road areas that were touched in terms of major roadway projects for tree planting locations by DPW. From there, the city has been a partner from the Green Macomb Partnership since its inception about four years ago. As a result of this partnership, the city has been a beneficiary of significant amount of tree and tree canopy information. This includes mapping that depicts the overall current tree canopy areas, current tree canopy percentage by more specific areas, tree planting hotspots, impervious surface areas, et cetera. This mapping has been used specifically by the city's planting efforts as well as the efforts to obtain tree planting grants over the last several years, which the city has been quite successful in obtaining. The Green Macomb Partnership has also offered the opportunity for the city to not only share its success stories, but also learn from what other southern Macomb County communities have been doing in regards to their tree planting programs and their overall tree canopy. The county, through the Green Macomb Consultant, has also developed tree planting guides for all occasions, which promotes and educates users on the right tree in the right spot. This particular map kind of shows our areas where priority planting should occur, and I know Director Moore uses this quite frequently in terms of where to plant trees along roadways and applying for grant applications. But always leading by example, the city has taken the issue of tree planting and canopy seriously. The city has incorporated significant tree and other plantings through many of our projects. Dodge Park, for example, one hundred and thirty-five deciduous trees, over two hundred and ninety evergreen trees planted as part of the Dodge Park overhaul. Some of those can be seen here. The community center itself, eighty-six deciduous trees, eighty-three, or twenty-three evergreen trees planted, and I apologize for the pictures, it's not a good time to take pictures of trees at this time of year. We'll get that picture updated in the spring when they come full bloom. Van Dyke, over six hundred trees were planted as part of the Van Dyke Project in that three-mile stretch, providing overall appearances of that. Dodge Park, when that roadway was redone, over three hundred trees, three hundred and thirty trees in total were planted along that roadway. Again, increasing tree canopy, tree presence along those roadways. The M-59 Boulevard, over nine hundred trees through the Boulevard in terms of our section of M-59 by itself were planted as part of that project. So the city has taken the initiative. Dalian Park Nature Trail, two hundred and ninety trees, as that trail continues to be installed, those trees are going in to provide for additional landscaping and tree coverage throughout that area of the city. This specific area, just to the southeast of Beaumont Center, kind of, sorry, shows that, and this is the planting plan that goes along that, so trees all the way along the pathway itself. Stormwater, the city is part of this overall tree canopy. One thing that tree canopy can severely enhance, I should say, as part of its overall program is how the city reacts and then takes care of stormwater. Every site is reviewed against the city's extensive engineering standards for stormwater in conjunction with site plans, but that site plan is also paired with that tree preservation and landscape plan that we'll see in one minute. So not only is stormwater from a conventional standpoint taken into account, but also the city's ability to retain tree coverage and provide tree coverage enhances that stormwater relief as well by deflecting water in terms of direct rainfall, not allowing it to hit the ground, run straight into a certain area, the trees actually deflect that. The city is also using innovative approaches, including rain gardens. This happens to be Mitchell Drive, one of our new stormwater facilities, fully landscaped, fully aerated, but it also, it's a beautiful pond itself, but it also functions as a main stormwater facility for the overall industrial district in that area. This is one of the rain gardens in plan format, a little different perspective for you, that's going to be constructed in one of our industrial areas over on mound over by Bridgewood, in terms of a new development that's coming forward. So a rain garden bioswale that's going to be used for an innovation in terms of dealing with stormwater there. So just a different way of using vegetation and overall coverage, or lack thereof of impervious coverage, to deal with stormwater itself. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. So where do we need to go? So changing our mindset, that's one of the biggest things that we have to do. Education will be a huge effort in indicating that trees are not liabilities, trees are not an unnecessary cost, and trees are not an obstacle to development. Too many times in the Macomb County mindset, that's how trees are viewed, they're seen as obstacles. I need to get rid of them so I can have a nice clean site to move forward. Trees need to be seen as an amenity or as a way to increase value, and they're a way to decrease long-term costs overall. So I think the education of this is the changing of the guard, so to speak, to say, these can actually be used to sell your project rather than being an impediment to actual development itself. So how do we change the mindset? Our to-do list, as indication, education will be a huge effort. This is essential to change the past and to some degree, current mindset, that trees are almost a detriment, as I talked about, to the point of view where all trees can be viewed, where all can view trees and the overall tree canopy as an asset, something that is essential. Education such as the Green Macomb Right Tree in the Right Location information being readily available to those within the city who want to plant on individual properties as well as those developing property within the city, but also to highlight the existing information that's also available to those residents on the city's web pages regarding the city's tree planting program, available trees, tree policies, et cetera. The city's policies will need to include complete green streets, looking at streets as means of multimodal transportation where appropriate, but taking that one step further and looking at roads as a means for spaces where vegetation should have a major presence, carrying policies in our plans, policies and standards that there should be a minimum of no net loss of trees, and a stance in finally continuing our commitment to planting heavily through our own projects, all in an effort to increase the tree canopy towards a goal. Currently, right now, our tree canopy is about nineteen percent. Our goal should be set much higher than that, twenty-five to thirty percent in terms of our overall tree canopy itself. So again, the complete greens streets policy could lead to roadways that look like this, again, those nine hundred trees along M-59. Public inventory and urban forestry plan, working with Eagle for grant opportunities to develop inventory of public trees, which can include the number, general location species, and quality. We've been in contact already with Eagle, they're quite excited about the city's potential application to do this based on our size and the number of trees that we have in the city. So again, as the summer comes forward, if approved within the budget, we will be working through the state as well as the county. We've also been done in contact with the county regarding the potential of a joint effort. The county is also in conjunction with Eagle, working on their own program. So again, working with them, we've already had preliminary conversations about merging our two efforts together to really create a beneficial plan, not only for us, but how we merge our efforts into what the county's doing. This is a tree preservation plan, so a typical tree survey that we receive as part of a site development. Our tree preservation requirements right now indicate that all trees six inches in caliber must be identified and as provided on the site plan and indicate the size, condition, and whether the tree is intended to be removed or preserved. This plan is then paired with the actual site plan and the landscaping plans. Under our current requirements, several options exist to meet the preservation requirement. This includes simple preservation, replanting, or as part of a last resort payment into the city's payment and lieu fund. Again, tree preservation requirements are synced with landscaping plan, including the city's new landscaping regulations to yield sites such as this. Again, a couple of different sites that have developed over the last year or two within the city. Showing the city's focus on planning efforts to provide an extensive number of trees on You go back and look at a number of the city's older industrial subdivisions, you'll never see sites that look like this, but this is the city's new standard in terms of providing trees. If you notice some of these trees, if you, the tree just to the left here, this was a site, the Comfort Care Center, where we merged the idea of obviously tree preservation with new tree plantings, and obviously we do that wherever we possibly can, and we're viable. So the city has been leaders in trees, we are Tree City Active for thirty-four years, that makes us top fifteen in the state. that makes us top fifteen in the state in terms of the number of years that we've been active. Our current tree canopy, again, is about nineteen percent. We can reach an estimated thirty percent plus if we really concentrate our efforts, and I think that's where the city needs to go moving forward. With all tree planting efforts, though, ordinances, funding, education, more still can be done in each particular area. So what are some of the innovative ways that we can do this? Utilization of a planned unit development ordinance that allows for flexibility of development regulations. Sometimes lot size configuration and our own requirements make tree preservation truly difficult, and the PUD process can help alleviate that. This has been utilized more and more in recent years and allowed onsite trees to be preserved. Sorry about that. You've seen a number as council members, you have seen a number of PUDs come before you in recent times, and again, those merge the ideas of flexibility and lot sizes and the ability to reserve trees while planting others. The concept of developing ordinances that potentially increase density or allow additional flexibility for greater percentages of preservation occurring. While we may have a standard set as a minimum applicable standard, the need may be there to allow for additional density if additional preservation is achieved. Sometimes preservation of trees is costly for a developer. That can be offset by allowing for additional density, which may not be necessarily noticeable in the grand scheme of the development, but in terms of the preservation can be seen greatly by the number of trees being preserved. Increasing the overall tree preservation requirements beyond the current thirty-seven percent, or to develop a different means of achieving that thirty-seven percent, which may include additional trees which may currently be omitted. What I mean by that is simply saying, obviously first, you can go above the thirty-seven percent. A number of different communities calculate this differently. Rochester Hills is at forty percent. Shelby Township is actually below us. Grand Rapids varies between somewhere between thirty to fifty percent. Ann Arbor is basically a no net loss of tree canopy fee. Ferndale's no net loss of trunk size, so they, there's a multitude of ways to do this. But simply said, our tree preservation percentage requirement can go up. It's always a balance between applicable or applicable development, ability to develop a property as well as tree preservation. The other thing that we can simply do is right now, some trees within our survey are discarded. We can take that provision out and thereby counting every single tree that meets our qualifications. That's another way to do it. Developing tree preservation requirements based on specific zoning regulations, so allowing somewhat of a sliding scale, taking into account whether that an industrial site may not be able to or maybe shouldn't preserve trees at the same rate that a residential site does. That is becoming a trend, that is becoming something that communities are looking at. So that way, you don't have one-size-fits-all tree preservation, you apply it based on how the property is ultimately going to be developed. Increasing the number of replacement trees, simply indicating that right now we have, again, thirty-seven percent preservation. We require trees to be preserved or replenished if you're not meeting that thirty-seven percent. Maybe the number gets increased greatly if you dip below that. If you have to re-remove trees, maybe you're penalized for doing that. There's a multitude of ways of providing for that. So with that, the city has always been considered, has always considered trees and tree canopies an important asset, but today is a new day and a new opportunity to push forward and to increase the presence of trees within the city and increase the city's overall tree canopy. With the tools that are currently in place, those potential tools outlined here, and the establishment of a sustainability commission, the city is in a very good position moving forward, just as the tree canopy itself, replanting the miles and miles of city streets, establishing and growing the trees that have been planted to this point, as a part of the public and private developments, and ensuring that those remaining woodland areas within the city remain intact, will take time, care, and commitment, which the city has shown is of utmost importance, and the establishment of a new sustainability committee is just another example of that commitment. Thank you very much.
You can see in the spirit of continuous improvement, much of what we're doing under the umbrella of sustainability is very good, but it can be done even better. The sustainability initiatives just discussed will require significant feedback from stakeholders internally and externally. Many, perhaps not all, will be cost-effective, some will be a higher priority than others, some will take months to complete, others years, and some even decades. In order to sort through the framework of the city's sustainability plan and provide meaningful feedback to city council, the city's first-ever sustainability commission is being recommended. The city attorney will now provide an overview and creation of this exciting new commission.
Good morning, Mr., or good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Vanderpool and residents. As you can see from the presentations thus far, the city has been diligently working to improve the sustainability of the city across all departments. However, we recognize the city is not alone in this, and that residents, businesses, and all other stakeholders must play an active role in redeveloping and developing a clear path towards sustainability for everyone. Tonight, I have been asked to provide an outline detailing the creation of a new advisory board called the Sustainability Commission, that we believe will create a focal point for these discussions to help develop a sustainability plan for today and for the future. The Sustainability Commission's purpose will be to help create a model of sustainability through collaborative efforts to advocate, educate, and advise city council on social, economic, and environmental health of the community now and in the future. So where do we begin? First, the city attorney's office has been tasked with preparing an ordinance for council's consideration, that if adopted, would create a new advisory board known as the Sustainability Commission. If adopted, the administration and council will then recruit five highly motivated and passionate individuals to work with the city to research, study, and provide recommendations to city council and administration concerning environmental issues, and to recommend programs aimed at protecting and preserving resources of the community for today and for the future. The commission will also work with state and local officials, businesses, organizations, residents, and experts, including two ex officio Sustainability Commission members that will be appointed from SEMCOT and the county to complete studies, develop programming, establish volunteer opportunities, and identify potential grants and funding sources. The ultimate goal, of course, is for the commission to assist in developing and implementing the Sterling Heights Sustainability Plan. The proposed ordinance will establish specific duties that require the commission to advise city council, administration, and other city agencies on the creation of a model of sustainability, recognize our natural resources as an asset of the city of Sterling Heights, and encourage responsible stewardship of these assets. Collaborate with citizens, employees, service providers, and other agencies to share and develop those ideas. Assist in assessing the environmental impact of proposed city undertakings. Advise and assist in developing outreach and educational programs, and advise council and administration of their findings to assist in developing and implementing the city of Sterling Heights Sustainability Plan. The commission, of course, will hold meetings that are open to the public and will invite input from all stakeholders in the community, develop policies, and preserve the resources of the community so they are in balance with the current needs and the needs of future generations. From a timeline perspective, it is anticipated that council will be asked to consider the adoption of an ordinance creating the commission this February. Once adopted, the city council administration will actively recruit commission members to serve on the board with an eye towards appointments in June of 2020. The goal will then be to work over the next twelve months to create a draft sustainability plan, which will then be presented to council in or around July of 2021. From then, the commission's efforts will be to implement the plan. Going forward, the Sustainability Commission's mission and challenge will be to consistently identify new opportunities and advise future councils and administration on ways to improve policies, set new goals, and to modify and implement Sterling Heights Sustainability Plan. With that, I thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, and we'll turn the presentation back to City Manager Mark Vanderpool.
And Mayor, continuing on, but shifting gears just a bit, mobility and alternative transportation is an important component of our sustainability plan, as you heard a bit earlier. Sterling Heights has hundreds of miles of sidewalk, and we've been making a concerted effort in closing the existing gaps. We have an opportunity to accelerate this program over the ensuing years and enhance pedestrian connectivity across the city. And at this point, our city engineer Brent Bayshaw will lead this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, and members of council. Sterling Heights, since its inception, has made a priority of establishing a sidewalk network and developing a walkable community. There have been significant improvements to the installation of the sidewalk network over the last ten years, and more improvements are in motion for 2020 construction already. However, there's much more work to do. In this presentation, we'll take a look at the existing sidewalk network, the methods used to establish this network, and a plan to complete the sidewalk gaps in upcoming years. The city of Sterling Heights sidewalk network contains six hundred and ninety-four miles of sidewalk. Five hundred and twenty miles are along local roads, while one hundred and seventy-four miles are along major roads. A significant impact has been made over the last ten years, as eleven point six miles of major road sidewalk has been constructed. As you can see, there's a large inventory of sidewalk, and the city has a sizable program just to maintain the sidewalk, but this presentation will focus on the areas along the major roads where sidewalk is needed but not yet constructed, or commonly referred to as a sidewalk gap. Where do sidewalk gaps exist in our network? The map, the map shown here highlights completed walk in existing sidewalk gaps. Completed sidewalk is shown in orange lines or red lines. The red lines indicate sidewalk that has been completed over the last ten years with the date of installation next to it. The map also highlights existing trails as purple, and lastly, the green lines on the map indicate the sidewalk gaps. So for example, if you look at section five and seven of the city, you can see that the sidewalk is complete around its entire perimeter. However, if you look at section six of the city, you can see there are large gaps on the north side of the section, and smaller gaps on the east side of section six as well. Similarly, on the south side of the city, you can see sections nineteen and thirty have sidewalks surrounding their entire sections, and sections twenty-nine and twenty have sidewalk gaps on the east side. These are just a few examples on how to read the map. There's a lot of information on this map, it'd be hard to deliver all its information in one presentation, therefore, please note that we posted this map on the city website under the map section of the engineering webpage for detailed viewing. So how did the sidewalk network get constructed? What are the methods used to deliver this network? There are currently four methods of delivery. The vast majority of the sidewalk was constructed through land development. As the parcel is developed, the forward way of the road is dedicated, and the sidewalk is constructed closest frontage. As an example, I'd like to highlight the recent construction of sidewalk at the northeast corner of Plum Brook Road and Shana Road. And this new sidewalk connects to the sidewalk constructed by the Assisted Living Center to the north and the commercial property to the east. Another example of a development occurring, building the sidewalk is at the southwest corner of Moravian and Shana Road. And this new sidewalk connects into the existing Shana Road sidewalk and a gap that was also recently constructed by development by Consumers Energy in 2018 to the west. Another method of delivery is through the city sidewalk gap program established in nineteen ninety-six. Through this program, city council authorizes the notice to property owners to construct the sidewalk across their property. The property owners afforded forty-five days to construct the sidewalk, or can opt for the city's hired contractor to construct the sidewalk, in which case they were invoiced upon completion of the sidewalk. Property owners afforded the opportunity to join a consent special assessment, which allows for a five-year payment plan with six percent interest. So as an example, the eighteen mile road sidewalk across Roadgate Manor was constructed in 2011, through the sidewalk gap program provided a significant improvement to the network in this residential area. Additionally, along the south side of eighteen mile road between mound and Van Dyke, there will be sidewalk construction there this spring, early in 2020. So the third method of delivery available to the city, just became available this decade, actually, was through federally funded road projects, which now allow for sidewalk construction to be included in road projects provided a complete streets resolution was in place. The city used this method to construct many sidewalk gaps through federally funded reconstruction projects such as Van Dyke Avenue, Dodge Park Reconstruction, and the M fifty-nine project. So to provide an example, we can look at the M fifty-nine project. As part of this project, not only were the sidewalk gaps completed, but mid-block crossings were also installed, which provide options for pedestrians to cross M fifty-nine at locations where push-button activated pedestrian crossing signal heads could be installed. Additionally, the city was able to utilize this delivery method to fill sidewalk gaps on Dequinder Road from M fifty-nine to eighteen mile road in 2018, including the sidewalk gaps on nineteen mile road east of Dequinder as well. So this method is great for the city as the sidewalks are funded through federal dollars. Lastly, grant funding can be used to deliver sidewalk improvements. Although these grant opportunities are far and few between, the city was able to secure grant funding to cover the majority of the cost for the pedestrian bridge installation in Dodge Park, that among many of its benefits, most importantly, secures that the trail will remain open for years to come. So to give an idea, over the last ten years, how much each delivery method was utilized, development was responsible for thirty-seven percent of the sidewalk gap construction. The city sidewalk program was responsible for nineteen percent, and forty-four percent was constructed through road projects. So what is the current market cost for sidewalk installation? Sidewalk costs have significantly risen over the last decade. The low bid price in 2010 was two forty-three a square foot for four-inch sidewalk. Likewise, in 2012, two dollars and sixty-two cents, and these were low bid pricing that we received with the sidewalk gap programs. In 2019, the low bid price yielded a cost of seven dollars per square foot, which is an increase of nearly three times that of 2010 cost. This unit equates to a cost per one hundred feet of frontage of one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars in 2010, to a cost per hundred foot of frontage of three thousand five hundred dollars in 2019 for a construction of concrete sidewalk costs alone. So there's continual opportunities to improve the sidewalk network, and there's a lot of work left to do. A prioritization of the sidewalk gap inventory has been completed. The priorities were based on factors, not in any specific order. Following factors were utilized. Potential usage, the sidewalk must be in place where, excuse me, where use is anticipated. This ties into another considering factor, which is, is there a point of origination and destination for users? Safety is a factor, what are users doing now to walk from point A to point B? Are there safe alternatives? Costs, some sidewalk may cost more than others for multiple of reasons. What is the benefit per cost when comparing sidewalk gaps? And tying into costs, natural obstacles, another considering factor used to prioritizing sidewalk, there might be a creek, drain, or other obstacle that makes sidewalk gap completion a financial challenge. And another factor is consumer demand, has there been user feedback or request for a certain sidewalk gap? Another factor is upcoming opportunities, which speaks more about the timing. For example, is development or federally funded road project imminent where we could get the gap completed? And lastly, and this ties into the cost as well as it's a significant challenge, is there road right-of-way or easements in place for the construction, and if not, what is the cost of that acquisition? So using these factors, priority sidewalk has been identified for sidewalk gap completion. And this map shown has the same color coding as the previous map, remembering the green lines indicate sidewalk gaps. So looking at the north half of the city and working west to east, the sidewalks surrounding the predominantly residential areas between seventeen mile road, M fifty-nine, Dequinder Road, and mound road would be prioritized for completion under its new sidewalk gap completion plan. This would eliminate all the sidewalk gaps surrounding each section. The industrial corridor is between mound and Van Dyke. Currently, there are only, there's only one way to traverse through the industrial corridor north of Metro Parkway, and that's through nineteen mile road. This prioritization plans allows for four additional crossings of the industrial corridor. The sidewalk on the west side of the industrial corridor would be installed with the Innovate mound project, a gap along the east side of the industrial corridor. The gap along the east side of the industrial corridor prioritized along Van Dyke Avenue to connect the north and south Van Dyke districts. Additionally, this prioritization plan completes many gaps on Utica Road to provide for a continuous route, and the south side of Riverland Drive is included in the plan as well, and also the completion of the last gap on M-59 from M-53 to Sterrett. The highly requested corner of 19 Mile and Shaner is included, and the completion of many gaps along Clinton River Road and Saul Road. So moving to the south side of the city and working west to east, the predominantly residential area between 17 Mile, 14 Mile, Dequinder, and Ryan, I mean, Dequinder and Mound would be prioritized with gaps on 15 Mile Road, Mound Road, 14 Mile Road, and to complete the sidewalk gaps surrounding these sections. Another crossing of the industrial corridor would be prioritized on 14 Mile Road to join the existing industrial crossings available on 15 Mile Road and Metro Parkway. And the west side of the industrial corridor would have sidewalk gap completion with the Innovate Mound Project. Now looking east of the industrial corridor, the sidewalks gaps on 14 Mile Road would be prioritized. Sidewalk along Maple Lane prioritized. Sidewalk along 15 Mile Road prioritized, as well as Moravian Drive. And small but important gaps, like the ones at Metro Parkway and Van Dyke, on Plum Brook Road and Dodge Park Road. So, of course, completing these gaps come at a cost. So the estimated cost of improvement needed to complete the sidewalk is 6.5 million. All methods of delivery would be used to complete this prioritized sidewalk gap. Road projects are estimated to make up 1.4 million of that figure, with the bulk coming through improvement through the Mound Road Project, which will be filling sidewalk on both sides of the roads for all six miles. Development would account for approximately 20% of the sidewalk or a value of 1.3 million. The remaining funds would be derived from the city sidewalk gap program, and the estimated cost is 3.8 million. The city would fund it as it currently does. We would also, and also need to make right-of-way and easement acquisitions to allow for the construction. And grant funding will be pursued in this model, but not relied upon. So with any planned goals must be established. Two goals can be derived from the prioritization of the sidewalk gap completion. The first goal is a realistic goal to complete the sidewalk over a 10-year period at the rate shown. The first years would see a slower rate of progress, but the background work and easement and right-of-way acquisition would be in process. Years 2022 to 2024 would see a spike in sidewalk construction due to Mound Road order installations and a constant rate of improvement over the final six years, when enabled the completion of over 63,000 feet of sidewalk gap, or nearly 12 miles. The second goal relating to tying into the local road network relates to tying into the local road network into the major road network, as discussed in goal one. The local road network ties into the major road network at various locations, mostly at sidewalk installed adjacent to local road. However, there are a number of cul-de-sacs that terminate at major roads, 81 to be exact. Nine of these locations are missing sidewalks, such as Hanson Court. Make these connections, making these connections will create more access points to the major road network from the neighborhoods. There are smaller gaps to be constructed, but fulfill of greater purpose. The connection should ultimately look like this one at Windsor Court off Clinton River Road, and a smaller connection would be needed just down the street at Fell Court. Of the nine locations missing sidewalk connections, right-of-way is needed from five, which would be a little bit more complex to complete. But four of the nine areas have sufficient right-of-way, and sidewalk gap can be enabled quickly, and construction commence right-of-way on those. The final piece of this plan is a set of strategy to see these goals are met. The strategy to complete the sidewalk prioritization will drive on the continued use of all methods of, four methods of delivery with a stronger focus on the sidewalk gap program. Additionally, an amendment to, would be recommended to ensure costs are equitable. Two action items, action items would be required. First, a boost to the allocation of the sidewalk gap program would be required. A continual funding source over 10 years in the amount of 3.8 million would be required. In the first year, easement acquisition would commence and allow for a continual process for upcoming construction. The process would be continually evaluated to target parcels where development is not seen in the foreseeable future. Section, second action item would be an amendment to the city sidewalk gap program to serve the purpose of reducing the financial burden on property owners. As noted earlier, sidewalk costs have nearly tripled within the city sidewalk gap program over the last decade. This provides a tough financial predicament for property owners, and in order to alleviate the financial strain, the following can be pursued. We could increase the term of the consent SAD loan from five years to 10 years. Provide a low interest, a low interest loan on that term. The current interest rate through ordinance is 6%. As proposed, we'd offer a prime rate, which is typically much less than 6%. Provide low income assistance program where nothing is due until the time of parcel property transfer. And lastly, providing an equitable financial cap on properties that is based on the increased costs seen over the last decade. The concept of the cap is to ensure all property owners are treated fairly, and unit costs are comparable regardless of the time of sidewalk completion in relation to market This concludes my presentation, but lastly, I'd like to note that we'd love to hear from sidewalk system users. If any residents have any requests on any sidewalk gaps they'd like to see completed, please contact the Office of Engineering to make those requests. Thank you for your time this evening.
And Mayor, our final presentation this evening is centered on workforce sustainability. Sustainability includes a well-trained and diverse workforce, and also a workforce that has good succession planning in place. We've spent a great deal of time and effort on these areas over the past. Through Sterling Heights University, the city has a renewed focus on training, which is paying dividends in cost efficiencies and employee satisfaction, while also creating greater stability in the workforce. With respect to diversity, a best practice necessitates that a city's workforce should reflect the demographic makeup of its community. The city's workforce is becoming more diverse, but we must continue to make progress in this area. The fire chief is now going to discuss an innovative program, which will enhance the quality of new fire paramedic recruits, while also fostering a more diverse workforce in the fire department.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, and any residents who are watching. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you an exciting new program that we feel will not only help us recruit and retain firefighters, but as Mr. Vanderpoel said, also help us make the demographic makeup of the fire department more in line with that of the community. Before we get into that, I'd like to discuss some of the hurdles, obstacles, and barriers, and how we got to this point in recruitment. It's no secret, it's a nationwide problem, that communities are struggling recruiting good firefighters. It's the same with police forces across the nation. We're actually doing pretty well, but why is that? So a lot of things are at play with this situation. The job itself has changed. We put a lot of requirements on our firefighters with EMS and with hazardous materials and a lot of different things. And what we ask them to do is a lot different than what they had to do years ago. So the job has changed. Paying benefits at the same time, there have been some struggles with cities keeping up on things like retiree healthcare, pensions, and things like that, so that's also an issue. Back when we had the Great Recession, we saw a situation where there was more trained firefighters than there were jobs. And I think we haven't recovered from that, because I think people were turned off by the fire service, because they did all the training and they couldn't get hired anywhere. But in my opinion, the most important hurdle we have is the requirements of what it takes to become a firefighter in most departments in the state of Michigan and across the country. And that's what I'd like to focus on tonight. So 1957, when Sterling Township started its fire department, our requirements were, you needed a high school diploma. If you applied for a job with the Sterling Township Fire Department at the time and were accepted, the township brought you in, and they trained you one week of what they called firemanship. So we offered you all the training you needed, and you are now a firefighter for Sterling Township at the time. And that was really the requirement for the next 20 years. When we went into the 70s and early 80s, the fire academy concept came around. The state was now requiring that there was so many hours of needed training. And so Sterling Township, and then Sterling Heights, the city of, started sending people to the fire academy. Really wasn't a big deal, eight weeks, now it's up to 11 weeks. So you take a new employee, you send them off to a fire academy for eight weeks, and they're back working in your fire station and responding to calls. At the same time, the Sterling, the city of Sterling Heights Fire Department started taking on a more role in EMS. It's been going around across the nation. Fire departments took on that role, and it was a great thing to do, because that's really where lives are saved, in the EMS of the fire service. So by 86 through 95, we required all of our candidates to have an EMT license before we would hire them. The reason was, is because that's a state licensure, that's some testing that you have to do, and there really is no guarantee you're going to pass all that. So if we hired somebody and they didn't get the EMT license, what do you do with them then? At that time, and up until 1995, we would still send them to the fire academy if they didn't have the fire academy training, but we were required of them to have the EMT training. In 1991, the city of Sterling Heights decided to start offering advanced life support in the fire department. And I know many of you know that. That was one of the biggest changes in the organization. Advanced life support is like bringing the emergency room to the, to the people that call 911, and that was a huge increase in our capability. But with that huge increase in capability came a huge increase in training. So when we made that segue to advanced life support, the city had to spend thousands and thousands of dollars to train the firefighters that were going to do it. So at that point, the decision was made, let's start requiring paramedics to have that training before they came to the city of Sterling Heights Fire Department. At the same time, the national registry paramedic requirement came around, which increased what it took to become a paramedic. And at the time, it was about a 60% pass rate for people that were trying to take that test. So there was, there was the thought process that if you hired somebody and tried to train them in all these things, you would send somebody off for up to two years of schooling with no guarantee that they would ever pass. And then what do you do with this employee that you've had for two years that can't operate in your fire department at the time? So it was a well-thought-out plan to put us where we are today, where we're acquiring all those things, but it has also become a hurdle. Along the line, also, physical agility has always been an issue that, there's always been a baseline of physical agility component that sometimes makes it a barrier for some people not to be able to pass. So where are we going to go with this? And let's look at moving forward, and what are we prepared to do? So we need to be more proactive. We, in the last couple of years, have done a pretty good job recruiting. We've made some videos, we've done a lot of meeting at fire academies, and like I said, we're actually doing pretty good compared to other fire departments. In fact, today, the Civil Service Commission just approved the new list that we have for hiring, and we have 23 good candidates, all with a different mix of where they're at in the training. But let's not kid ourselves, those 20, a lot of those 23 candidates are looking in other departments as well. So it's a fierce market out there with other departments, and that list will probably dwindle fast. So what we need to do is we need to identify interested future recruits at a young age. We need to engage them early and engage them often, and we need to take them under our wing and help them meet the requirements, which is the meat behind the plan that I'm going to present to you tonight. So there's a couple of aspects to this plan. The first thing we want to do is, we want to get into the high schools. We've been meeting with Utica Community Schools to help get that system going under what they're calling the Med Start Program. But one of the things we're going to start doing is offering what's called a junior fire academy, which is going to be part of the high school curriculum. We don't know if it's going to be two weeks, well, it'll be one week per group, but we don't know if in this next school year, this will kick off in next year's school year, if it's going to have to be two or four times that we offer it. I've offered the Sterling Heights Fire Department to be front and center on this, and if it gets too big, I'm quite positive I can get other fire departments to join in as well. But the concept is, is in the 10th grade year of high school, taking those people that are interested in pursuing that, that career path, and having them come to the fire department for that week of school, and learn about what it is that a firefighter does. Kind of like we do at Civilian Fire Academy, but condensed down in one week. Along the lines of that, we're going to start pursuing things like EMT and fire training. Similar, you know, Warren Con already does the EMT program, but we're looking to kind of change that up and give them the, you know, the thought process of wanting to become a firefighter early on. And if this is successful, we will look at other school districts like Warren Con and others to pursue this along. So the cadet program, the focus on the cadet program would be to grab these students when they graduate from high school. So if it works well, they've already got that idea of they want to be in the fire service, 10th and 11th and 12th grade, they might even have some of that training under the belt, like the EMT program and things like that. We want to grab them out of high school and put them in a cadet program, and what they would basically become is part-time employees for the city of Sterling Heights Fire Department. They wouldn't be responding to fire calls, they wouldn't be manpower on the engines, but they would be doing some stuff that we'll get to in a second. But one of the things they'd have to do is be actively enrolled in the paramedic firefighter program full-time, okay? We would look at giving them 50% of that tuition reimbursement. They would do their clinical ride-alongs with us at the Sterling Heights Fire Department. They would have to obviously keep up a certain grade point average, because we'd want them to be progressing along as we did this. How we would like to operate this is, we'd like to start with four cadets. We'd like to bring two in each year, kind of maintaining six in the program. It should be about a two-to-three-year program rotation. It depends if they have any of it. When they started, like the EMT license would mean that they could get the rest of it in about a year and a half. We may see some people that change their mind along the way, so it's probably going to be a little bit of a rotation, but we would, we'd like to strive for having six at any given time. Obviously, their work schedule with us would be flexible around their schooling, because schooling would be the most important thing they, they would be doing. And so what would they be doing for us as part-time employees? Well, I can tell you, a big one would be a smoke alarm program. I can tell you right now, we are in desperate need of a smoke alarm program in the city of Sterling Heights. We've had four fatal fires in the last couple of years, and not one of them had a working smoke alarm in their house. So it's not anything we can offer, because we would be inundated right now with nobody to do it, but we're looking at some systems that, that we can get this going. But a cadet program, they could be non-stop installing smoke detectors in, in houses in Sterling Heights. Along those same lines, they could be doing a home safety program, maybe at the same time, maybe along with that, with our aging community, with our elderly residents wanting to stay in their homes, a home safety program would be good. And of course, they would help us with all kinds of public education, like the open house and the programs we do in the school. This right here is a win-win for us, because this is also getting people interested in becoming future firefighters and fixing a need that we have desperate in the city of Sterling Heights. So what would be some of the projected costs? Well, these part-time employees would start at $12 an hour. If we used them for 20 hours a week, again, flexible during the year, each of them would make about $12,500. 50% tuition reimbursement would be about $7,500 per year, because right out to the full cost of becoming a firefighter, paramedic through McComb, with all the books and tuition is about $15,000 in the two-year. We would give them some uniform costs to give them something that, you know, makes them look like they're a Sterling Heights firefighter, but yet not one of our, our online firefighters. So basically, the cost for the first year is estimated at about $81,000, where the subsequent years would be about $120,000, $125,000. Now, I know that might give you sticker shock, but I can tell you that if we're really getting serious about wanting to bring in people into our organization and help them along the way, I think this is the way to go. As we said earlier, the reason why I think this could help us with, with our diversity recruitment is because our high schools really are what our community is, and if we can engage any high school student of any, you know, gender or ethnicity or whatever to enter the fire service, this will help them along, and I think it could be successful into the future. So that's the end of my presentation, Mr. Vanderpoel.
In conclusion, Sterling Heights is well-positioned for continued success, due in large part to the city's Visioning 2030 Plan, as I mentioned at the beginning, but also a robust local economy, major redevelopment, and a massive transformative investment in quality of life services. While the past five years have been exciting and have energized the community, the hard work of everyone involved will be wasted without a strong focus on sustainability. The city is committed to sustainability framework discussed this evening, and working with the newly created Sustainability Commission and City Council to effectuate the ideas discussed. Sustainability is a byproduct of innovation, and innovating living is more than a tagline in Sterling Heights, it's becoming a mindset. We're now available to address any questions that the city council may have, or anyone from the audience, and we look forward to your feedback. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. At this time-
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. At this time, I'll open it up to anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments on any of the presentations tonight. Mr. Matthews? While you come up, I do want to just say thank you to all of the employees, directors, managers who gave presentations tonight. We appreciate that. Very thoughtfully done, and, and I saw my colleagues and I taking a lot of notes, so I'm sure we'll have some questions for you. Mr. Matthews?
I'd like to join in my thanks. It was very easy to understand the presentations, and as I've not been on any of those rather inside meetings, you know, as somebody in the community. Thank you very much. There's a quote I heard some time ago. I had to look it up again online, and it goes something like this. "A society grows great when old men plant trees whose shade they know they shall never sit in." And I've heard that years ago, and I hear it here and there. And really, this meeting brought me back to that because a lot of the meeting was about trees. These are things you do today, and you incur cost for them today, but they add value and goodness and betterment to the community over time. And there is, some may be value to them now. They look good when they're small and when they're saplings, but when they're later and they reach maturity, then you really see the full benefit. Many of the things talked about tonight follow that pattern. The sidewalks, the tree canopy, reimagining how we use some of the space in the city. Planet McCloud, I believe, alluded to this. You have that large cost upfront, but that's kind of deceptive because it saves that money later. With some of the erosion that you might see on the riverbanks and things, if you don't take care of them, there is that large cost later on that you have to do to bring them back into the fold. Some of the value, however, you get now from this. There's property value increases, as you mentioned in the presentations, and it's rather attractive for new homeowners. I know that was something I considered when I bought my house here in 2017. And it's still something I consider, you know, as I walk around the city today. And I just went for a walk in the park right at the end of my subdivision. Attorney Koschewski brought up there's a new advisory board coming up. That Sustainability Commission, perhaps in the future. I think that's a wonderful move. It's a very innovative move of getting community members involved, and it's a very important topic. Having the community involved in innovative solutions is always something that's wonderful. Director Langlos mentioned the environment is ripe for those no-mo zones by the water. I think that's a wonderful idea. My aunt used to work for the forestry department in the state, and that's something she actually said is very popular across many communities where they're having those types of problems. Right now, they're considering them. She was mainly talking about areas on the west side. That was mainly the area she served, but I imagine the same properties apply over here. About a decade ago, I had to think about it now. I facilitated a group in Morel Oak High School called Students for Environmental Action. Now, from that point onward, I've really been talking to a lot of young people about the topics of sustainability and environmentalism. And I have to say, that's something that they're very concerned with in general, but they don't really know exactly what they have to do to get there. They want to care, you know, about the environment and do good, but they feel it's a, you know, Herculean task, and they're not exactly sure what to do. So with the topic of recycling, I think this was Director Mersch part of the presentation. I'm not exactly sure what's being considered in terms of single stream versus multi-stream, or how many multi-stream we might be looking at there. Maybe color-coded bins could help. I know a lot of students said they didn't know what number plastics they could recycle over the years. And that plastic bag statistic, I would imagine, is a very sunny number because if I surveyed my kids, I think most of them would think that, you know, you could recycle plastic bags. But 50% of people are throwing them in there, and that does reduce our efficiency quite a bit. So maybe making it just a bit more clear what can be recycled. My fiance is an engineer at Eagle, and there is definitely talk about how much of a concern with messaging there is there. It's very difficult to get people to understand those topics because when they hear "plastic bag," they think, "Oh, I'm going to toss it in the plastic bin." And that's all the thought that goes into it. So I think a lot of that is people not knowing better, but they want to know better, and they want to do better, and they want to live better. And I really appreciate you taking a very forward-looking view in a lot of these situations so we can live better here in this community over the next couple of years to come. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Early?
Mr. Mayor, city council members. My comment is really short. I really appreciate the presentation, especially what Chief Martin is planning with the, the youth. In a meeting yesterday, they were discussing that the schools needed to encourage more the, the students to serve. And I think this is a great opportunity. They were talking about the veterans, how they could go in the military forces. But this one, I think is a great opportunity for the, opportunity for the youth people in the schools. Thank you for doing it.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Early. Anyone else? Seeing nobody. I'll open it up to the city council. Any comments? Any, anybody want to start? Mrs. Arco?
Mayor Taylor, I'll start, and then I know you'll let me talk if I think of something else later.
Much as you want.
Yes, I know. There aren't as many of us tonight, so it'll be easier.
We'll time you.
Yeah, right. I think part of it is, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go down my list as I did for, like, the speakers. And probably, you know, Mr. Bohorski's right. As I was talking to Mr. Moore coming into the building today, I says, "This is my favorite meeting of the year." And Mr. Bohorski reiterated that. It is my favorite meeting because it is a meeting of possibilities. And that's, and then sometimes it becomes probabilities. So I, I really look forward to this meeting. The first thing is, is land use. And although it probably doesn't apply directly to rezoning or anything like that, but it does apply to reuse. And I'd like to see some research done possibly with the new owners at Lakeside to see if it's feasible to put a satellite library at that, you know, the building. I think if we're going to redevelop that at, at any point in time, that we need to work with them. We think about education as being a part of that redevelopment, and what better way than right from within, that whether we put a used bookstore there or whether we use it for circulation, I think it might be a good, something good to research. So as far as land use, that's what I, was a preconceived thought before I walked into the building. Mr. Moore brought up something that I'm really concerned about too, and that's the future of recycling. And only because it is a nationwide problem now is what are we going to do with our trash? We talked about plastic bags, and plastic bags, we say, are not recyclable, but they are reusable. And some of them still do have the recycling symbol on them. So then I want to know how they get away with putting the recycling symbol on the plastic bags. So if we can research that, I would appreciate it. I like the idea of some of our own collections being twice a year, whether it be hazardous waste, shredding. I think that could help, you know, as far as our citywide recycling. Another, another topic that I would like researched, and it's, and I'm not saying that we have to have a plastic container from GFL, but more and more, I think we need plastic containers for our garbage on the streets. And it means you can buy your own, get a garbage can or whatever, but I think loose bags on the street should become a thing of the past. Too many times, it's the, people put it out, sometimes 48 hours ahead of time, and you see a garbage bag there, and the next thing you know, it's open because there's animals that found the garbage bag. I think, I like the idea of the public education plan that was outlined tonight by Mr. Moore. I love the idea of the staff tagging the carts so that people know that they've made mistakes and can correct them in the future. I guess my big concern about now is, you know, I make sure that everything's clean when I put it in there. If you saw how things, my plastic and my aluminum were all dried out before I even put them in the bin, and I'm thinking, if I do go through all of this and somebody else, and it gets put in the truck, and then somebody else doesn't do the same thing, then what have I done? It doesn't help anybody. It's, you know, pointless. So I really do like the idea of staff tagging the carts, and I imagine that it would be, they would be ahead of the recycling trucks. Okay. And I think that's what I have right now for Mr. Moore. Mr. Langlos mentioned no zone, no-mo zones, what I, I think is something that we really do need to think about. It's, it's a, it's a benefit for all of us. Now, it's aesthetically pleasing as well. It isn't just a sustainable necessity, but I really think that it looks nice. It really does. Depending on how high this zone, this, you know, is, I'm sure that in some areas, you don't want it to get to the point that it's so high that it looks like weeds. So, but there are so many things we could plant there that would be, that would make things look so much nicer. We talked about side, you know what I noticed tonight in the different presentations is they actually cross over one into another, whether it be sidewalks, whether it be grounds, or, you know, bike paths. It's, the presentations actually crossed over between the need and the department. So we talked about eight-foot sidewalks, and I wondered what the ADA requirements now are for sidewalks and wondering, you know, if we, if eight feet is a better width or six feet is a better width, that maybe some of the newer sidewalks could meet those requirements rather than just go with the ones we're saying aren't sufficient. So why put in sidewalks that aren't sufficient, brand-new? It doesn't, it wouldn't make sense if we think that there's really a better opportunity out there. And then the bike sharing, are we researching that? Is that the city would own the bike sharing, or would there be an owner or vendor that would come in and actually take care of the bike sharing? And I think we need a bike lane through Dodge Park because if anybody has walked themselves or used a stroller or walked their dogs, there's a big difference from somebody casually using the park to somebody that's riding a bike and timing themselves to make sure that they have the best speed out there for that particular day. And it does, it's dangerous. So that's something that we can think about. And that's all I think I have for Mr. Langlos. Mr. McCloud brought up the tree preservations, and today's the first time I heard rain gardens, which is kind of, it's a nice term that we're using now, rain gardens. And some of these rain gardens are, is there any vegetation that can be planted there that would help us with the eco-cycle? And then for the trees, it says that we have to change our mindset. Now, is this changing the mindset of the individual residents, commercial facility, individual? Because we hear, we get calls, the city does, about people wanting to take down a healthy tree because they don't want to rake leaves anymore. So how do we go and change that mindset that we still need that tree? And that we don't take down healthy trees? I agree that we have to change the percentage of our tree canopy in, in the city, and we have a great opportunity to do that. And if there's grant funding that's available or CDBG funds that might be available for the upcoming year, it might be something that we can look into is funding that project. And then as far as the increase of the number of replacement trees for new construction, if we could base that maybe on the, not just necessarily the, a number of trees that were taken down, but also the size of the development. And then my mind, my, the first development that I'm thinking of that has trees now that will probably be, some of them will be taken down and new trees put in, is Maple Lane. And, you know, that's, that would be a huge loss to, of, of the trees that we have out there on the golf course. All right. The Sustainability Commission, I certainly can agree with the presentation that Mr. Koschewski gave tonight. The only, the only thing that I would consider is, I want to know if five members are going to be enough from the community. I think that might be something that, maybe we start out with five, and then we see if it's, you know, it becomes popular, I would say, with some of the residents and, and those that are serving, and also the expertise of the people that would be applying for that commission. But if we do, I would see, could see that easily going to a seven-member commission. And I'm glad that we're moving forward so that by June, we'll have appointments. All right. Okay. Mr. Bayshaw? And our sidewalks. We talk about sidewalks in every budget year. We know that we need more sidewalks. We need more replacement sidewalks. We want to take care of this. It's not always as easy as it looks, but this again would be, like it says, Mr. Langlos brought up sidewalks, and so did you. And maybe some of these newer sidewalks could have a larger width depending on where they're at. Because it does make a difference when you're walking. It really, it, I mean, I walk all over the city, so I can tell you that in some areas, it's easier than in others. And I guess is how, I guess this would be probably through the budget process too, not necessarily tonight. But I want to know if, how often we actually do sidewalks inspections for older sidewalks that are in need of repairs? Do we wait for complaints, say, of people that are walking in these areas? Or do we actually proactively walk up and down the sidewalks ourselves to find out what needs to be replaced besides the, that are already there, that are not in good shape anymore? So that's all I have for sidewalks. Chief Martin, I couldn't agree more with you about being proactive and how we go and staff our fire department. But I think I, you know, we talk about this all the time. It's difficult to find good help. I have to tell you that in the workforce now, if you are over 45 and 50, you're going to have a better chance of getting a job than somebody that's 30. And I think part of it is work ethic, is that people that are, you know, they, they just work differently, they think differently than they did before. You know, it's, it's, I wonder if, like incentives that we used in the past, like overtime, are as effective as they were, say, 10 years ago as to now? So I know that throughout the country, they've been doing research on 40-hour firefighters. And what they would do is they only work 45, 40 hours a week. They don't want to work weekends. They don't want to work 24-hour shifts. I really know if that's the trend that, that the fire departments are going with throughout the country, and if we could do some more research on that. You certainly explained, I had, in my mind, I had questions as to how much would we, you know, it would cost for the academy or the, and you, you gave us the figures on that and what the reimbursement would be, and I think that's fair. Also, I think it would be an incentive to get some of these cadets in place because if they know that part of their funding or their education is being paid for, that would be an incentive to, to look into the cadet program. So I think that, I think you did a great job in, in researching that and presenting it to us so that it could, it could happen. And because I'm sure that there are people that are interested in becoming a firefighter, but the cost of it deters them, especially for the amount of time that it takes. It's a lot of money. So I, I really think that your presentation was well-done, and I think that it's certainly moving us in a forward direction. So if we could look at some of the other trends in firefighting throughout the country, I think that would help all of us make decisions in the future. And for right now, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arco. Anyone else?
Thank everybody for all the hard work they put into this because it is my favorite meeting of the year.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Arco. Mrs. Koschewski?
Sure, I'll go next. I enjoy this meeting also because we kind of used to call it our wish list meeting. Tonight's presentation was fantastic. All the things that I've been waiting to see happen, and it looks like they're going to happen. So, few comments. The Sustainability Commission, I think is a great idea. I'm looking forward to seeing some information on that and putting that together. Our thought is always to prepare for future generations. Look at the big picture, anything that we do, and make sure that we are preserving the great things in Sterling Heights for our children and our children's children. That means, I'm going to say again, nature preserve, leave it alone. We don't need a path around it. They can walk on the sidewalks, and especially down Delco, not Delco, down Hall Road there to Jimmy John's Baseball Park from Troy. Anyway, with that said, in regard to recycling, the question has always been communication with the residents. I think that's a big issue that we need to deal with. We have some great things going on in Sterling Heights, some great ideas, but we need to reach the residents. And I'm hoping that Community Relations is going to work with. And I'm hoping that Community Relations is going to work with staff to make sure that our message gets out to them. In regard to Mr. Moore's comments, the website on how to dispose of items, I think that's a fantastic idea. I can't tell you how many times I've had people ask me, okay, what do I do with the old tires that I have that took them off my car, they're sitting in my garage, I don't know what to do with them, where can I get rid of them? It would be great to have a program a couple of times a year for these unusual items that we have, simply because we don't know how to get rid of them. And to have something on the website where you could go in, click on something, okay, how do I get rid of so-and-so-and-so? This is how you do it, this is where you can take it. I think that is a tremendous idea. In regard to, again, recycling, I know that there are residents that still prefer to use the recycling centers. Now, we have two centers left, and the idea is to close them off yearly. I would like to see, until we get a really good recycling program set up, I would like to see those centers left open. I would like to see them closed off. I would like to see them maintained. I would like to see them monitored. Somebody, I've said this before, hire high school students, part-time college students, where they can come in and maintain, check ID, people coming in, make sure that the recyclable items are not contaminated. In regard to the non-motorized pass that we're trying to do, and to make all of our five major parks accessible, that was a goal that we've had for many years, and I'm glad to see that that's still there, that we're still working on that. In regard to trees, question, do we have an arborist on staff? That if a resident has a question in regard to a tree, or what kind of a tree should they plant, is there some way that they could contact, send an email, maybe a website, where I have this question about this kind of tree I want to plant? Or can somebody tell me something about this particular plant that I have in my yard? If they could maybe send a text message that would be answered by an arborist on staff? The sidewalk gap program, I still am going to ask if there's some way that we could do some research and see about the bridge, the old Kleinel Bridge, which no longer is there. If there was some way that we could work with Edison to see if maybe we can create some kind of a, a walking path, a ten-foot-wide path, to connect the Kleinel Bridge to the Hanson Bike Path? Because that way, it would give anyone that rode a bike path the ability to make a complete circle through Dodge Park, down Utica Road, crossover, go back around. In regard to sidewalks also, I noticed on one of the maps, Canal Road from Delco to Van Dyke, that that was something that would be considered for sidewalks. I hope I didn't misunderstand that, but that's the way I saw, but it's not an immediate program. I believe Canal is a two-lane highway in that point, from Delco to Van Dyke. I'm wondering if maybe in our future plans, that that could be made a three-lane with a center left-hand turn lane, and then possibly do a sidewalk at that time, just maybe not immediately, but future plans. Sidewalks have always been a big expense. I like the idea of maybe making it a ten-year payback term. I like the idea of the low-interest rate. I like the idea of low-income assistance and the cap. If there's any other way that maybe we could assist residents, because I know it is expensive, if there was some way that we could set some money aside to maybe help with that, to move the sidewalk program along a little quicker, it would be greatly appreciated. Fire cadet program, I think is fantastic. That's something that I think has been in the back of our minds for quite some time. And I commend the chief on putting that together, because that is exactly what I had hoped that we would do. I think the program is fantastic, I think the cost is reasonable, and I think we're going to be very, very pleased with the results. With that, I would say, that's all the comments I have. You did a great job tonight. Glad to see the direction you're taking the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosci. Mr. Redkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say what a wonderful presentation. It really hits upon a lot of the things I think we've all been working on for some time up here, and I'm, I'm glad to get started with it. With that, through the chair, I'd like to ask some questions to Michael Moore about the recycling program. And forgive me, I know we have some overlap here, so we might have questions firing in some different directions. But first, I am excited to talk about recycling. I'm curious, the city has, has been planning for a while to close the recycling centers. Is that still part of the city's plan? Or have we put that on pause for right now?
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I think that is still the, the current plan right now, to close one of the centers this July 1st, and then the last center the following July.
Okay. And I know that some residents are very concerned about that, now that we don't have a, a plan going forward for, you know, recycling every, at every home. I mean, to me, the plan I always foresaw for the city before recycling rates kind of fell off the cliff, that we would bring recycling to every home automatically, and then we could close the centers, because they would no longer be necessary, because people could recycle at their homes. If we're no longer going to opt everyone in by default, I am highly concerned about closing the recycling centers we have currently. To me, it just creates a situation where our already low recycling rates are already going to plummet further. We're one of the only large cities in, I think we are the only large city in the state that doesn't require recycling by everyone by default. And that's a great concern of mine going forward. I know that Mayor Barnett in Rochester Hills has some innovative programs that he's been doing for encouraging curbside recycling, and also sorting to try to hopefully get the contamination and things out of the recycle stream. But just for me, I think it's, it's, I would agree with Mrs. Kosci at this rate. If we're not going to bring recycling to every home, I would say that we should leave the recycling centers as-is, and gate them, and have an attendant who checks the loads. Because once upon a time, before I was on council, this council, or the council before us, was approached with a plan to bring recycling to every home, it was a net cost of nine dollars per household per year. And it declined at that time to increase the recycling cost, because it would, it would require, I believe it was a million and a half dollars more per year. But at this time, I think that we probably couldn't get that rate anymore. Could be Mr. Moore.
You know, I don't know what the rate would be. I haven't discussed what the cost would be with GFL. But because of the state of the market has decreased, I would venture to say the cost would likely have gone up.
Well, if you could do me, without objection, if you could come forward with a, a cost estimate, if we wanted to bring in every home, I think that would be helpful to the council to try to evaluate our options. Also, well, thank you, Mr. Moore. Everything else was wonderful, and I really appreciate it. I have some questions for Mr. Langwells. What a wonderful presentation. I mean, I'm so excited for this community center across the street to open. I know we all are, I think, we're ready. But I have some concerns. You know, I've advocated for some time now about a Southern Recreation Center. I was wondering where we are on that, and if that might still come to fruition. Through the chair.
Mr. Sterlingwells.
Obviously, our, excuse me, our, our focus has been on getting central community center up and running. We still have great partners, great partnerships with school districts, specifically Warren Consolidated Schools on the southern half of the city, and I think there's a lot of opportunities still on the horizon. Obviously, again, our focus has been on getting this one rolling, but we have had already conversations with superintendent in the school district about, you know, what this means. Our time at Fillmore Elementary has been fantastic for, you know, that neighborhood, as well as servicing residents that might not have the means to get to the center of the city or to the north end of the city. So, we definitely see value. We definitely have had conversations about, you know, strategically using areas like Fillmore, using that school moving forward, depending on what the school district has in store. But certainly, you know, I think more to come on the horizon once we get rolling a little further.
Okay. And then I have a few questions for the bike sharing program. I'm excited that this could become a possibility in Sterling Heights. I'm kind of concerned, though, because we have a possible bike sharing program without bike pathways really to get about the city. It seems like we're putting the, the bicycle before the horse, I guess, here, because we have to get the bike paths and the shared pathways in the city, I think, before we can really roll out a bike sharing program that makes sense. I know, I know residents would value it, I, I think I would value it. But at the same time, if we're not having safe roadways for people to bike in the city, I'd be concerned, because I'm already, at least in my opinion anecdotally, seeing a lot more pedestrian crashes with residents traveling about the roadway here. That's one of the biggest advocates for the sidewalk program, is because we want to get people off the streets and away from cars, and hopefully to protect them. But I think it's a wonderful program, hopefully, like other cities have, we could pursue sponsorship for it. I think that's how a lot of places have done it. When I lived in London, it was City Bike. So, the, the bank basically sponsored the bikes, and it's like free advertising for them as they go about the city. That's all I have for Mr., Mr. Langwells. Could I call Chris McLeod to the, to the chair, I guess? Well, I'm, I'm so happy to hear about the reforestation program here in Sterling Heights, and I know we've had a real push to try to get some more trees in the city. I was hoping that we could hopefully write a new ordinance, and I was wondering what would your suggestion would be for tree coverage? It should be a, a shared thing, we have to keep so many trees like now, and then add a fifty percent, you know, to fifty percent for payment in lieu of trees, so we can replant them ourselves? Or what do you think is the best mix to create a, a better requirement? Because right now, thirty-seven percent, I think, is low compared to some of the neighboring communities.
Mr. McLeod.
I, I think structure-wise, I, I don't necessarily have an issue with the, the structure of the ordinance, and like, the way that our ordinance works now is, is very similar to other communities. Preservation first, if you can't do preservation in totality, then you do preservation plus planting. Worst-case scenario, you do, you do payment in lieu. I think structure-wise, I don't think I necessarily change structure. As I noted in the presentation, you know, thirty-seven percent, that number can go up. You know, what that number may be, you know, it's, it's going to be a marriage between, you know, still making sure that we allow for viable developments, but also making sure that obviously tree preservation occurs at the proper rate. So, you know, I, I don't want to venture a guess what that number would be, but I, I would say that, you know, it can definitely go up. But again, you know, even communities directly, you know, adjacent to us, you know, they're, whether there's a three to, three to ten percent increase, I think is probably somewhere we would be. I mean, like I said, I think we'll have to work our way through the numbers. Also, keep it in mind, as, as built out as we are, the sites that we have left are going to be very challenged sites, so we'll also have to take that into account when trying to establish our percentage.
I'm wondering if we could do some things administratively to hopefully create better sites while also preserving the trees. I know that when we redeveloped, or passed a new zoning overlay district for Mountain Road, parking was an example, where we can now administratively change some of the parking rules, to be consistent within our ordinance while also not being a slave to the, the word on the page, when some of these sites, obviously, they don't work. And we want to make sure that we're, we're helping developers build in Sterling Heights, while also speaking to the residents, and I, I know that every time we have development, I, my phone rings off the hook with residents who are concerned about us losing landmark trees and the tree canopy. So, hopefully, maybe we could give a little bit of leeway for the planning department, you know, and the engineering department to work to basically protect the trees while also eyeballing a site and making sense of it. And then I guess, I also have a question about the, the Jode Point subdivision. I know I brought this up previously, that it was in violation of our tree ordinance. Is it in violation of our tree ordinance, Mr. McLeod?
There are concerns with its compliance, and so the city is, is actively pursuing remedies to potentially, you know, bring that site into compliance.
This was before you were, were here, correct?
That's correct, yep.
And we've changed the tree ordinance since then, so that subdivisions will be in compliance?
We have not changed necessarily the ordinance. We've changed the, with the way in terms of, of implementation policy. So, at the end of development, or at the end of development, or before CFO is granted, depending on which development type you're talking about, whether it's a subdivision or a commercial site, planning now is one of the prerequisites prior to that sign-off. So, with that, it'll be a matter of making sure that not only all the trees that are supposed to, supposed to be preserved on the site are there, but also obviously all the landscaping that was supposed to be put in, in addition to that, is also in place. For example, we went through that with Mitchell Drive. The HTI site was designed to preserve some additional trees along the roadway. When we went out for our final, we just, we determined that three of the, I think it was three of the trees that were supposed to be preserved were damaged during construction, had to be removed. So, before we granted CFO, at that point, we required them to plant additional trees to make sure compliance was, was with the ordinance. So, again, that's kind of a checks and measures system that's in place now.
But it wasn't before? Or it wasn't in the same way before?
I was gonna say, I, I don't want to venture how it, it was done before. Like I said, that's one thing that, you know, as, as we've kind of moved into, you know, operating the planning office, that's, that's one thing that we want to make sure that we're out there doing.
Because I know that, that's one thing that residents speak to me about, that we have to make sure that we're holding, we hold residents accountable to code enforcement. We've got to make sure we're holding developers accountable to the rules, too. Otherwise, it seems like there's a deal for people who have a great deal of money and clout in the city, and it's a deal for everybody else. And that's not fair.
There, there's a great amount of collaboration that goes on between building, engineering, and planning when a site kind of comes to its culmination. So, before monies are released for engineering, for a subdivision, let's say, you know, planning and engineering are working collaboratively on that, before a commercial site, or office site, or industrial sites release for CFO, all three departments are out there doing their final checklist to make sure that there's obviously compliance with each profession's, you know, specialties.
I appreciate that. I want to make sure that we're, we're holding them to account. I also have a question about, and I didn't see in the presentation, but which, your presentation kind of like balanced an idea off my mind. Now, I've talked in the past about some cities are implementing stormwater utilities to hopefully account for stormwater better and help pay for it. And I was wondering, has Sterling Heights investigated this? Are, are we in the planning process for this? Or what, what is your opinion of a stormwater utility, especially because cities like Detroit and Grand Rapids, other places have implemented it already?
You say stormwater utility, are you, are you meaning a fee?
A runoff, yes, a fee.
Oh. I would leave that to, to Mr. Bayshaw. He handles stormwater in terms of, I mean, and obviously ultimately, that's a council thing, as far as I'm aware, that we don't have any fees. But, you know, but, you know, realistically, the engineering department makes sure that, from our standpoint, water is collected and disposed of appropriately. And I, and I can honestly say this, that I think we do that better than pretty much anyone within the region. We have the fewest number of flooding incidents of anyone around, I think. And obviously now, in our presentation, you saw a couple of examples where we're seeing more innovative, more appropriate stormwater methodologies to, to implement stormwater practices. So, but the fee thing, like I said, I'll, I'll leave that to, to Mr. Bayshaw and administration.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. McLeod. At the chair, I'd like to call Mr. Bayshaw to the, to the microphone.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I could comment.
Sure.
Well, it's getting organized. There is current legislation pending in the state legislature that would allow us the authority to approve a stormwater utility and a stormwater utility fee. That's something that we've been staying abreast of, something we would support, but it's still winding its way through the legislature. There are some cities that I think already have that. I think you mentioned.
They do.
The city of Detroit, but we're following that very closely.
Wonderful. Answers that question. Mr. Bayshaw, I, I appreciate that. I, I had a curiosity early this year, when I was contacted by some residents, the city maintains all the retention ponds within the city's limits once subdivision has been created, do we not?
Some are city-maintained, and some are privately maintained.
How do we determine which ones are privately? I mean, I guess in the past, we just took them on, and now we require homeowners associations to take care of them, or?
Typically, unless it services multiple parcels, if it services just one development, it's usually maintained by that development. So, if it's a, like a joint retention pond that services multiple parcels, usually then it's established at the time of development as a city pond that... then it's established at the time of development as a city pond that the city maintains.
I was just curious, because I know we approved several orders this year to basically change out the mechanics of the system, so that some of these ponds would run a little bit better, especially because they had been beyond their useful life. And my curiosity was, when we approve new subdivisions, usually the homeowners association is the one charged with running that, whereas in the past, I guess, it was just the city's responsibility.
Correct. Usually when they're developed now, it's a, the retention facility is part of the development, and it's the responsibility of the developer. I think of what you're seeing, a lot of the pump repairs are regional retention facilities that were constructed a while ago to service a larger district area.
Wonderful. And I think it's wonderful, the sidewalk gap program, something that I've been advocating for a long time. The problem always is, is we have so many gaps. Not, we've done pretty well, but we still have so many gaps, and it costs so much money and time to both either convince property owners to sell us their parcel, those easement sprays, or we have to then eminent domain them and sue them in court to take control of it. I saw one gap, though, that I think that we should be added to your list immediately. It's fourteen mile and Van Dyke, where the, like, the last remaining jug handle turn is right there. There's a bus stop on the jug handle, essentially, and people have to walk across gaps. There's no way to get a wheelchair or some accessibility to that bus stop that's parked right there. So that would be a priority to me, because I know that people get off the bus there to work in Walmart and things in that area, and if they can't even cross the street because there's no ramps or anything, it makes it very difficult. I would argue that that's something we should add to the list.
Yeah, I think that's a good location.
And then, I guess, just to make sense of the sidewalk program you proposed, we would put a cap on the price we charge property owners to basically say, because we have thirty-six different districts, and they say that we investigate for sidewalk every year, so it can take some time to reinvestigate an area. It's not fair for someone to pay two dollars, because we looked at them this year versus seven dollars in the future. Are we just going to kind of standardize the price that we're going to charge homeowners going forward, or how would the price cap work, I guess, for the work?
We haven't worked out all the details yet, but it would be something to make it more equitable. Like you said, you know, eight, nine years ago, the price was two dollars and forty-three cents. This year, it was seven dollars. So, something, so, you know, when city council, you know, directs a property owner to build sidewalk, we're not, they're not getting penalized because of the market or the time of year where they're being directed.
I agree with Mrs. Kosky. We should reform our ordinance to extend the length of the loan, to assist low-income homeowners that, basically, we lean the properties, so when they sell it, they have to pay the sidewalk program. I also agree that we should lower the interest rate. Six percent sadly works for student loans in America, but almost anything else you buy right now, there's a lower interest rate than that. And I think it's unfair to penalize people to make improvements that benefit the entire community. In some cities, they've tried to implement a tax for sidewalk, because much like a roadway, it's a public amenity for everyone to use. I don't know if that would work in Sterling Heights, but I think that, I appreciate the creativity displayed in the program to hopefully both improve and expand our sidewalk program. That's all I have, Mr. Bayshaw. I just had some comments on the fire cadet program. I think it's a wonderful program. I'm very excited about it. You know, we talk about creating a diverse community, and diversity starts right here at home, and I think our high schools are a perfect example of the people who live here. So I'm so enthused about it. I think that this will really help us to get off the ground and really expand our fire department, because I know that, unlike Mrs. Zarco, I don't think it's an issue. I think it's just kids today are a little bit different than their forbears. They're not, they don't so much want twenty-four-hour jobs, as they want to have some flexibility as they drive for Uber and things. But I think that maybe some changes in the department, not just for the fire cadet program or an order, you know, we currently run a fifth ambulance. It's only necessary during Monday through Friday, during peak times, eight AM to eight PM. And it doesn't make fiscal sense to me to expand twenty-four-hour firefighters for services only necessary for twelve hours a day. To me, that would be a tremendous waste of resources. I support the people, and I really, I think we need to have more firefighters, but we have to have, you know, an increase in calls to also match for the resources we're expending. To have firefighters on call for twenty-four hours, and we only need them for twelve, seems to be just a gross waste of resources. So I think that hopefully, the fire department and the fire union will work with us to create a sustainable plan to provide more firefighters and more firefighting in Sterling Heights, while at the same time balancing our costs against that. I also, just to comment on Mrs. Zarco's presentation, I completely agree, we should have hard-sided garbage cans. The thing that's so worrisome about trash day in my neighborhood is, we have skongs, we have raccoons, we have opossums, we have all kinds of stuff. And to drive out of my driveway in the morning and see trash bags that were ripped up overnight, and just lying there on the curb. So I fully support that, and I'm actually prepared to make a motion right now that we reroute our ordinance, or I actually would ask the city manager to bring an ordinance within thirty days to create a provision in our ordinance to make everyone have a hard-sided garbage can. Do I have any support?
Well, I think all we really need is...
No objection?
No objection. What do we need? We need three people here, Mr. Kachubski, to provide direction?
Correct.
Yes.
You got one?
Me, too. Two?
Anybody else to bring forward? I mean, how about, so, there you go. I think you've got your direction.
That works. You know, I also have some comments about some strategic planning ideas that were not on the agenda. Let me find my list here. You know, one thing I'm very concerned about is major corporations in Sterling Heights that I think could be better actors. You know, I look at the gap program that was presented to us for the sidewalks, and one thing that I know is left out is the Sterling Heights Chrysler plant at fifteen mile. From fifteen mile and Van Dyke, just a little bit west of Van Dyke, to almost halfway to the railroad crossing, there is no sidewalk on the north side of the street. Now, Sterling Heights, you know, Chrysler has been one of our greatest employers, and we really do appreciate them, but we've also given them millions of dollars in abatements over the last fifteen, twenty years. And the fact that they cannot or will not build sidewalk on the side of their parcel to benefit the entire community, I think is just atrocious. I think we need to take them to account, and hopefully encourage them to both to create sidewalk, and also to, for future billion-dollar projects, not million-dollar, not local projects, but for billion-dollar projects that we're approving here, we should have a community benefits ordinance in place to ensure that companies are giving back to the citizens who are giving them millions of dollars and free money, essentially, to tax breaks into the future. We appreciate their jobs, if they can do a little bit more than that, I think, is something that I think we should think about. I also think we should combine our art and beautification committees. Now, we're creating a new committee today, the Sustainability Commission, and I agree it should have more members, but I think that we kind of need to reformat and kind of change some of our current committee structures. I'm going to be bringing forward some motions on that in the future. But I think one thing we should do is combine art and beautification, because they pretty much have the same job. And to have two competing commissions or committees does not make much sense. I also think that, one thing that I think we should bring forward, which was not brought here, was that we should pay for postage on absentee ballots. We all talk about, you know, the civic engagement process and having more people vote. Right now, we're encouraging everyone to fill out their census to make sure that we have the money into the future. We should make voting easier. And one way I think the future of voting is going to be by mail. And if mail voting does take off, I think we're going to see increased savings across the board, because fewer people needed at polling locations on Election Day. And I know that we had an estimate of what a postage program for the average election in Sterling Heights would cost. I believe it was twenty-one thousand dollars, from what I remember from last year. I think we should implement that, because it's a small cost. I think it would be a tremendous thing to do for both the residents and to increase our voting numbers. I also had a question, through the chair, to Mr. Vanderpoel or Mr. Kachubski. We have to have a solid waste commission, by charter or by law?
Mr. Kachubski?
We have one, I believe it's by law.
By law? I was curious if we could roll it into the Sustainability Committee, or does it still have to remain separate?
I believe it has to remain separate.
Okay. That's all I had a question on that. I appreciate that, then. I also wanted to bring forward, I know we're doing a lot of traffic studies and trying to improve the pedestrian environment, but I've been contacted by several parents at Sterling Heights High School about the crosswalk in front of the school, and the lack of lighting, and the lack of sidewalk between Baumgartner Park there and the intersection at Shanner, the fire station. And they say a lot of kids now, because we have schools of choice, are actually taking the bus to Sterling Heights High School, getting let off right there, and then having to cross the street in the dark. And I guess the other day, a child was almost struck in the crosswalk. So anything we can do to make improvements, both in front of Sterling Heights High School, I also would argue that we should probably do a traffic study to try to understand the intersection better, because school is getting bigger, and I would hate to see a child be struck in front of the intersection. It scares me. We had a child struck in front of Stevenson High School earlier this year, and we're doing a traffic study there. I think anything we can do to make our intersections around our high schools and middle schools safer, we should really take into account. I also think that the planning commission should consider, or the planning commission, the city planner and the planning commission could consider amending our ordinance to allow accessory structures, or at least explore the possibility. A lot of cities are now authorizing them, you know, granny flats, or in a way for other families to move together. I really gave a lot of thought to this this past year, because, you know, I think that we're seeing a sea change in housing policy, not just here in Sterling Heights, but across the country. You know, a lot more children are living with their parents after college. A lot of people are moving back in with family members. And we've really made it hard here in Sterling Heights to kind of create housing that works for the families we have now. I mean, sometimes we get calls on the phone, people say, well, there's eight cars, and there's five people in this house, you know, or five families, or whatever. They just make things up. But anything we can do to enable our housing to be both more dense in some ways, but also work for the families we have now, I think we should consider. So I hope that we could give some thought to that, because I watched the zoning board of appeals the other day. There's already an accessory structure that's illegal compared to our ordinance, and they were going to vote it down. It's already existing, the person's already living there, and that didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, because I think that's the housing we should be approaching, ways to, you know, maximize the space that we have left. And I think that that was just a bad approach. So hopefully, we might be able to think about that. Oh, I also wanted to bring forward, you know, over the last, the last several years, we've had a lot of problems with excessive rain, especially these hundred-year rain events that seem to happen every couple of years now. One thing that I read in the paper just the other day was, the city of Warren had to dump thirty million gallons of SSO, which is sanitary sewer overflow, into the Red Run Drain that then ran through Sterling Heights. For people at home who don't know what sanitary sewer overflow is, it's straight sewage that's supposed to go to the Warren Street, Warren Treatment Plant. They skim it, and they add chlorination or bleach to the sewage to hopefully try to treat it, and then they basically shunt it into the drain, because their pipes are overloaded. So basically, we have sewage flowing through Sterling Heights, down the Clinton River, because Warren's treatment facility was overmatched. So I would ask the council in a future meeting, if, without objection, we could bring a resolution to ask Warren to improve their treatment facility to prevent these things from happening, because I cannot believe to think that there are residents who have sewage floating by their house here in Sterling Heights, because of the way the Red Run Drain runs. I think it's unacceptable. I wouldn't want to live next to it. I feel for our residents, and we have to encourage our neighbors to take care of their problems. They can't run through Sterling Heights. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'll keep it brief. As far as the recycling goes, I would like to see, if possible, we have a very talented community relations department that are fantastic at putting together little snippets, like they did for the census, maybe on the recycling, what's allowed, what's not allowed, so that, or that and/or have a twenty-minute program on SHTV on the recycling and the benefits to our community, and what is allowed, what isn't allowed, just as an education thing as well. We always put things in the water bills, that would be another place, the census, we're putting it in. I think the more we send out there, the more people were apt to reach that way. As far as the closing of the recycling centers, I am really not in favor of that. If there's grant, there's grant money that Mr. Moore alluded to, to buy security gates and to clean those sites up, maybe put up better signage as to what's allowed and how things need to be cleaned. You know, my husband and I watched a television show, I believe on Netflix, about recycling, and I was horrified to see how much really goes just to the dump. It's very disheartening to think, you know, a lot of people put a lot of effort into recycling, and it just isn't getting to where we all think it's getting to. So I think the more we can educate our public, making sure that sites are not contaminated and the right things are put in, the better off we'll be, and the more chance that that stuff will get to where it's supposed to be. I think that, you know, closing those sites without an alternative is just not an option. So I would like to see grant money pursued for those two open centers. I understand not opening that third center back up over at the new DPW facility, but if we at least had two facilities that people could go to, that there were some security measures in place, I would be really happy about that. The bike trails, I'm really excited about making all of our parks connected. That being said, when we talk about bike trails versus bike lanes on our roads, the problem I have with a bike lane on a road, I've gone into a few communities lately that have reduced the lanes for traffic to allow for a bike lane, so that they have totally bottlenecked traffic to allow for bike lanes that, especially in the winter in Michigan, are not being utilized. So I would hate to see elimination of traffic lanes to create a bike lane in the future, just my two cents on that. And I know we didn't talk about that today, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. As far as the reforestation, I think it's great that we just keep chugging along and getting our canopy up there. I personally, when we see new developments and they have this required tree preservation requirement, or this landscaping that we've put into place, I'm seeing more and more of bushes and pine trees instead of tree trees. And I'd like to see us encourage more regular trees instead of those bushes. And I love that a developer can, in lieu, you know, in lieu of planting, if it would compromise what their plan is, you know, make a payment, and the city can decide where those, where that money can be spent to put trees in. I really like that idea. The Sustainability Commission, love, love, love that idea. I don't think, I don't think five people are, is big enough either. I think seven would be better. The more people we get involved in this, the more we're branching out into the community. The sidewalk gap, the one that really stuck in my mind was Maple Lane at fourteen, between fourteen and fifteen. Talking about safety and kids, there's a lot of kids that walk from fourteen to fifteen to get to school. Maple Lane is really narrow, it has horrible shoulders, and there's no lights. So it's really a dangerous road for those kids to be walking from fourteen mile to Sterling Heights High School in the morning. So I'm excited to see that that's one of our priorities. I'm hoping we're not having to wait for the Maple Lane development. Maybe, Mr. Bayshaw, you can chime in there. You're not going to give me good news, I can tell.
Yeah, that one, unfortunately, there is a lack of right-of-way. On the golf course side, we only have thirty-three feet. So as part of the Verandah's PUD, that was approved by council a little while back, that did call for the completion of that sidewalk. And we did some improvements on, you know, the west side, when we improved the bridge, we improved that, the crossing of the Red Run Drain as well. So the bridge crossing is in place, it's all set for the Verandahs to install that sidewalk, but we don't have the right-of-way as of yet.
So, speaking of that bridge on Maple Lane, I love that there is a barrier between the pedestrian walkway and the traffic. Not all the bridges are like that, specifically the one I'm... Not all the bridges are like that, specifically the one on 15 Mile, just east of Shaner. The traffic is right there by the sidewalk. So I like that there's a protective barrier there. So, when, will the sidewalk be put in at the end of the development, or can we ask the Mosheris to maybe make that improvement at the beginning of the development? Is the Mosheri development going to make that improvement?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's reasonable to have it completed at the beginning.
Okay, I would appreciate that. I have gotten a lot of phone calls about that. It's very dark, Maple Lane is very dark in the morning. And the cadet program, Chief, you're speaking to the choir. These are my kids over at CPC that are in the EMT program that can benefit from this, you know, this post-grad, post-high school grad incentive program. Those kids, more than 50% of them test out state-certified as EMTs at the end of that program, at the end of the year. So, this is a huge opportunity for them, and I think it is a very reasonable investment for a fantastic future, for our community, not only our community, but the kids in our community. The kids at Utica Schools and Warren Con Schools, that is our future. So, to bring them in at the bottom level and train them the way we're trained, or, you know, the best fire department in the Midwest, I think it's a great opportunity for them, and I'm so, so very excited, and thank you for bringing that forward. Great thinking. And thank you all to everyone who did presentations tonight, and I have nothing further, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Schmidt. I think this is a really great strategic planning session. We always do look forward to this, and this year's, I think, really is, I mean, it's really speaking to me, and I think it's speaking to the type of people that we've been attracting as new residents, that we want a sustainable city. Sterling Heights was pretty much built out, as we know, and it's been pretty much built out for a while. We've been able to do a lot of new developments over the last, relatively, a lot of new developments over the last few years, but we're kind of pigeonholing them in to whatever area developers can find, and there's not a whole lot of native tracts where you can just get, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50, 100 acres, unless you're buying it from, say, a school district or something. So, what I think the numbers show is that we were pretty much well-built out in the 80s and 90s, and particularly by the 90s. So by the 70s and 80s, we're being built out, and we're expanding out of the city of Detroit, we're part of that suburban sprawl, which was great because with the automobile, it gave you the ability to have a big, you know, big tract of land that you could live in relatively cheaply. We built the infrastructure to get you out of the city and into the suburbs, and then, I guess, we'd never thought back in the 60s and 70s that that would have to be maintained and replaced at some point. And now we're 40 and 50 years into the life cycle of that infrastructure, and we're seeing it needs to be replaced. So, what I think we're doing now is we're saying, we're not going to make that same mistake again, that we're not going to look back 50 years from now and say, what happened? How did we get, how do we have just crumbling infrastructure? How do we have the inability to maintain our resources and maintain what we do have? So, setting the sustainability plan in action now, I think, is great, and I'm excited to see it come into fruition. So, a couple of comments on recycling. I was happy to see that the presentation included information from the Recycling Partnership. I met with a representative from the Recycling Partnership just this past week, and participated in a panel discussion regarding recycling in Washington DC. And, Mr. Moore, I think, do you know if the city's gone through, requested a contamination kit from the Recycling Partnership on its website? Looks like there's some way that they'll maybe tailor it towards your community. I'm happy to do that, but I just don't want to double our efforts if that's already been done. Do you know if, do you have that? Has that been done?
Yes, I do. I did receive an anti-contamination kit from that foundation, and it's in process right now to be instituted.
Okay, what does that entail? Does it just give directions on how to educate?
Yeah, it does. Pretty much what I had laid out in the strategic planning presentation, it pulled a lot from that as well, too. So it's a good majority of public education, which did include the tagging of cars and such.
Okay. And I saw there was a social media kit available, too? Have we got that, and are we?
We have that, however, I was going to work with Community Relations. The knowledge I had of that was a third-party social media company, and we were trying to work with Community Relations to do such.
Okay, very well. Do we get data from GFL regarding the recycling program here? Do they share anything with us?
If we ask for something, they share it. We don't receive data weekly or monthly, but anytime we have any concerns or questions, we ask for the information and it's received.
Do we know how many customers they have? Do they share that with us?
Yes, roughly 7,500 curbside.
Okay, 7,500 curbside recyclers. And do you know how many households there are in Sterling Heights?
Roughly 40,000.
Roughly 40,000, okay. So 7,500 households are paying $5,700 a year, right?
Correct.
So they're getting about $427,500. From what I could tell, I just looked at this coincidentally over the weekend, when GFL bid this out in 2016, they said, their bid said that if they're at 30% participation rate, it would cost $650,000. So 7,500 is not even 20%, and we're paying, so we're getting, we're close to that. But I would imagine, I would think the numbers are going to be at least 20 or 30% higher for the recycling. I mean, I know, I'm just speculating, and Mr. Radke asked you to look into that. Aside from having them go out and rebid it, I don't know how you'd get that information, but at 30% participation, GFL bids 650; at 50%, 970,000; at 70%, 1.2 million; and at 90%, 1.6 million. So, I think 70% would be a really lofty goal, but if we were to get that 1.2 million, I mean, assuming, it could be 50% more, we could be talking about 1.8 million. At 1.2 million, it's $27 a household, so it's a lot cheaper than what I'm paying, 57, but it is a subscription-based program, and many people just don't want to subscribe to it. So, have we done anything to encourage people to sign up? Have we done any sort of subscription drive?
No, there hasn't been a big push on our end to do such. We can definitely look into that, but I do believe that's going to be part of our public education program, though, is to encourage residents who aren't recycling to recycle.
Is it possible that, we talked about direct mail, but I didn't, I don't know, maybe I missed it. Is it possible that we could get addresses for the subscribers and direct mail just to them?
Absolutely.
Rather than put it in the water bills, you know, it's going to a lot of people who aren't subscribers. I also think, you know, we've talked a lot about the census, we're going to have information up about the census, and that's great, and I don't want to deflect from that at all, but maybe after the census effort, we could do a recycling effort the same way, you know? Have a public forum, hold some meetings, hold some stakeholder meetings at velocity, put information up at the library in the new community center, and, you know, encourage sign-ups and have sign-up drives, and have public education and be more visible about that. So, all good stuff. And I can report that this, I don't think this comes as a surprise to anybody, the problem has been diagnosed over and over and over by every mayor and every city council and every public works department throughout the country, and there's really not a whole lot of good answers right now. No city has solved this yet. So, we're all in this boat together, and we're trying to figure out, what do we do, given the changing landscape over the past couple of years? Onto the non, thank you, Mr. Moore, and I appreciate your presentation. On the non-motorized plan, just a couple comments on that. I'm interested in seeing bike lanes and bicycle lanes with new road projects. I think that with every new road project we do, we should consult our Complete Streets Ordinance or Resolution, whatever it was that we passed almost 10 years ago, and it has rarely, if ever, been actually implemented. And the state of Michigan has a Complete Streets policy, I don't know if it's a statute or not. I looked it up online, and they've got slides from like 2004, so they're not taking it very seriously either. It's time that we do that. And I understand your concern, Mrs. Schmidt, I really do, and I can see it right now. I mean, we will get inundated like probably nothing else before if we reduce traffic lanes, if we go from two lanes to one lane, or if we do something like that to put bike lanes in. I know that there will be outcry about that, but I got to be honest, we got to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere, because as I said, we've built infrastructure, not us, we've put in infrastructure over the last 50 years that we have no plan to support, we have no plan to pay for, we can't maintain. The state of Michigan has shown that it's completely incapable of providing us with the resources we need to maintain it. We all know that there's a problem, and nobody's willing to do anything about it. The state, the politicians in Lansing know that there's a problem, the voters know that there's a problem, and they're at a standstill. They're completely, we're completely at impacts. Nobody wants to pay more, so we ride on bad roads. So they say, well, why don't you cut other services? Well, those services are all untouchable, nobody's going to cut those other services. So, where do we go? We just continue down this path? And I'm sorry, but it doesn't seem like either side is ready to blink. So, what we need to do, I think, is that we need to start changing people's habits. I've said this many times over the past several months, if you have a two-lane road that's heavily traversed and has, it's at its full capacity for traffic, the old mindset was, we'll just build a third lane, put in a third lane, and that'll relieve congestion and traffic will flow better. So they do that, and guess what happens? People just drive that road even more. They see that there's an open lane, so they continue to drive it even more, and it goes on and on and on like that. And I don't want us to continue to make that mistake. There are, I don't know, I haven't been there, but I've heard, there are highways in China with like 30 or 40 lanes, and they have traffic jams that last eight days, okay? So, this is one of those cases where if you build it, they will come. You build more lanes, more people will drive. That's the bottom line. So, why don't we figure out a way instead to disincentivize vehicular traffic and make it easier for people who want to get from place to place in a different way? In other, in big cities and in urban areas, it is not uncommon for somebody who needs to go two or three miles to get to the grocery store, or to the drugstore, or to drop their kid off at school, to not take a vehicle. And for a lot of people who live in urban areas, they're not going more than two or three miles away, and so they just don't have a car. And if they need to go, if they need to go to the airport, or if they need to go somewhere farther, they're going to use public transit. Now, we don't necessarily have a great public transit, we have terrible public transit here, actually, but how many of your trips are within two to three miles? If we made it easier for you to get to where you need to go without using your car, maybe you would. Maybe a lot of people wouldn't, but I think a lot of people would use a bicycle. They would use some other means of traffic, of traveling, other than a motor vehicle, if given the option. So, I think we need to start exploring that, and it's not just because it's better for our environment, it's more sustainable, but because we cannot afford to maintain the infrastructure that we have. So we need to figure out a way to get people to use less expensive infrastructure. That could be, that could be expanded. We heard a lot about the sidewalk gap program, I'm really excited about that. I'd like to see, as many, as often as we can, expanding to six-to-10-foot paths instead of just doing the standard. But, you know, really, people that are walking on the sidewalk don't want bicyclists coming, just like was discussed at Dodge Park. And if you're, so cyclists don't want to be on the sidewalks, and pedestrians on the sidewalks don't want to be dodging bicyclists. So there has to be a different way of doing that. Under the Sustainability Commission, I'm going to take a contrarian viewpoint here, and I'm going to say, I think five members sounds good. I think five members might be the right, might be the right number. And the reason is, this commission from Mr. Kraszewski's presentation seems like it's got a different mission and a different objective than your standard board and commission here. If you take the zoning board and the planning board, they're very important boards, they get a packet of information, they study it, they come here, they vote on it, they go home. And we'd like them to be part of, you know, formal, you know, more formal policy directives and thinking about policy, but their mission isn't really to go out and to interact with, you know, with state, with SEMCOG, with the county, with the business community. Their mission is really to come to the city council chambers, make decisions, and really leave it at that. So, to me, I think we want a board that's really lean, focused, and not, and we want it to be made up of people that are not just passionate about this issue, but people who are knowledgeable about it. And so, in order to have really a very knowledgeable, lean commission that can focus on its mission, I don't see any, I don't see any reason why five would be not enough. I think that would be fine by me, and I'm looking forward to, I guess I'll ask, how was the number, oh, and one other thing I wanted to, you mentioned something about having ex-official members, right? So there'd be two, so there really would be seven, and these would be people from SEMCOG, or where would these ex-officials be?
So one would be from the county, and one would be from SEMCOG, that's what we would write in the ordinance.
Okay, so then you kind of, you get at the seven, you know, you're dealing with somebody who is a subject matter expert, right? Somebody who's obviously passionate about this sort of stuff. So I think five is good. I mean, that's, is that kind of the reason why you wanted seven, but you already got those two?
Right, Mayor. So, the idea was to keep it lean for exactly the reasons you were saying. It gets unwieldy when you have too many people, and then it's hard to fill with the expertise you're looking for. So if you can get to five that are really talented and really motivated, and then you add in the ex-official members, we're at seven, we felt that was the best way to go because they're going to be doing outreach to other community organizations as well as governmental officials. So we, keeping it lean keeps it focused and allows us to get to where we want to be.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm not going to go on and on, because I could, but you guys did a good enough job as it was. I just want to say, I'm in agreement with my colleagues and the chief and the need for the cadet training program. I think that the work that you talked about, that they could be doing, is something that's very valuable. And we've all talked with firefighters and with the chief and the administration that we need to do more to find good qualified candidates. There's no reason that we shouldn't be leading the way in terms of recruitment and retention of firefighters. We know we retain them once we get them in, but that recruitment has been an issue. You know, the sidewalk gap program, I think, is great, and I'm excited for that, and I think that you've come up with creative ways to get it done for residents who maybe don't have the ability to pay. I can't say enough about the reforestation. Trees just make such a big difference to your quality of life and your overall, I mean, overall, just how you feel about the space that you're in. Having a tree versus not having a tree is an incredible difference. It's like the difference between living in color and black and white. So, you know, we here in Michigan live in black, white, and gray, it seems like, for months and months at a time, and when that spring comes, you're just so rejuvenated. And so the more trees that we can have, the better it's going to be. And again, I want to thank everybody who, oh, and of course, our natural resources, Kyle Lingley, appreciate your presentation on that. You know, I bent your ear for probably 20, 15 minutes about another thing that I'm excited about, we'll save that for the budget process, but, you know, we don't do enough. We, I think, a lot of times rely on the federal government to protect our air, protect our water, and, you know, provide us with, you know, clean energy alternatives. And we just think if there's anybody that's going to do it, that's going to be the federal government that solves this climate change crisis that we're in, and it's not. I mean, the water that you drink comes out of the faucet in your home, and it's from a pipe delivered by the city. You know, the air you breathe, there's nothing more local than the air you breathe and the water you drink. And so, we need to play a bigger role in protecting- And so we need to play a bigger role in protecting, we've seen a lot of incidents in the last couple of months and couple of years about, you know, environmental problems happening right here at home. That six-ninety-six green ooze, and, you know, spills into the, into the drain. And, you know, protecting our, our, our waterways and our air is something that we need to be playing an active role in. And I think cities should be playing an active role in that. So I'm really excited about the presentations I heard tonight and the direction that we're going. I think this is one of those meetings that we should all leave here really rejuvenated and excited about the direction of our city. And, you know, it's going to be, I think, a really exciting year. We've got the rec center opening in just a couple of weeks, and about a month, I think a month from tomorrow, right? We've got the Census 2020, where we're going to have a sustained effort all throughout the year to make sure that we get everybody in the city counted. Of course, our summer festival and all that we have going on. So we're looking forward to a great 2020, and this is off to certainly a wonderful start. So with that, unless there's anybody else? Mr. Radke?
Sure.
And Mr. Zarco, if you've got anything.
You are so wonderful. I did.
Okay. Oh, I'll go first, then. I just want to make one comment about something you said I think I'm, I'm in total agreement with. It's a, I talked with Mr. Vanderpoel at lunch today. Now, we need to start talking about a total transportation plan. Too often in the city, we talk about roads, we talk about bikes, and we talk about sidewalk, talk about, you know, transit, and it all comes down to moving people from A to B. And we need to have a more series of solutions that kind of interlock and work together, because we can never build enough roads, we can never build enough sidewalk. You know, it's all has to go, has to go hand in hand. I think that when we talk about just roads, we forget that, you know, we subsidize roads. Your tax money subsidizes roads. Yet we make homeowners pay for sidewalk, and they have the same exact purpose, to get someone from A to B. For some reason, the city provides roads, but you're required to provide your sidewalk. You know, we talk about, you know, basically, transportation, that's not a way just to get A to B, and subsidize in the same way. You know, we pay for it through our taxes to get people from A to B. And if we don't have public transit, we have more cars on the road, because people still have to go from A to B. There's never a limit on how people move around, it's just what conveyance they use. And we don't talk about scooters or other ways to get about, and the future's going to have different Uber, and hopefully cars that can drive without a driver, and it's going to be a fascinating world we're going to live in. But until we start talking about a total transportation plan for everyone, and complete streets that favor pedestrians over cars, we're going to have the same old problems. You know, I, I, one of the, the downsides of being on the city council is that you, you get a message from Mr. Vanderpoel when everything terrible happens in the city. I want to say, in the last, two months of the last year, we had three pedestrians die. A vehicle on pedestrian accident, a pedestrian died. And whenever it happens, I have to think that we can do better. And a lot of the problems are, is that they don't have paths to cross the streets. What are they doing? They're jaywalking. They're going across Dequinda Road, or they're going across Ryan Road. We had a guy, when I first got elected on council, who was riding a bike on Maple Lane, in the dark there, hit by a drunk driver and died. And, you know, this is all a part of the process. You know, if, if we don't build streets for people, they still have to go from A to B. They're going to jaywalk, they're going to go on the shoulder. And if we build streets that favor cars and not pedestrians, the cars are going to win, and the pedestrians are going to die. So for me, I just think we need to talk about not just complete streets, but traffic calming, ways to improve the environment for pedestrians at the expense of cars. Because whenever we add another street to a mile road, just encourage, just not for our residents, these, these four-lane highways, ever people from Oakland County to go to St. Clair Shores. They go from A to B through our city, they don't even stop. If they're going sixty miles an hour, they don't even look. They're just zooming through our city, and they, in one side and out the other. And people approach me all the time, and they say, I'm ranting now, I'm sorry, but people approach me all the time, say, why can't we get more, you know, restaurants for lunch in Sterling Heights? Well, think about it, all our major roads are fifty miles an hour. People are going from A to B as fast as they can, and they don't stop, they don't look. One thing that complete streets and traffic calming says that if you slow people down, if you build, if you bring buildings up to the street where people can see what's for sale and what restaurants are there, they'll stop and they'll use it. You know, Birmingham took fourteen mile down a lane. They removed the middle turn lane, they made it two lanes in every direction and added bike lanes. And you know what? I went to a public meeting there, and people came out and said, we like it more. We get fewer drivers trying to zoom through or turn left or turn right. We have more use for residents. Now, what kind of city do we want to live in? A city that's built for the people who live here in Sterling Heights? Or a city that's built for other people to go through our city, use our infrastructure, which we're all paying for, and not contribute a dime to our economy? It really, it really scares me. And I think that we've seen so much. We had a lady get, get killed by a driver at Tiffany Drive on Fifteen Mile Road earlier this, late last year. She was crossing the street there, and she got hit by a car and died. And, you know, until, you know, we decide that we're going to build streets more for pedestrians and enable better crossings, like other cities do, like Ann Arbor, people are going to continue to die. And I find that unacceptable. And I think we need to do more. So I think we need to really look at traffic calming, look at new ways to do crosswalks, light-up crosswalks, mid-block crossings. You know, a lot of the infrastructure here was created for, you know, the nineteen-fifties and nineteen-sixties, we never updated it. So now we have a situation, which I just referenced earlier in front of Sterling Heights High School, where you have no lights, you have a bus stop that's in a grassy area without sidewalk. Residents get off the bus, because they, they, they use a school of choice to come to Sterling Heights High School, because it's one of the best schools in Macomb County. They get off on the grass, they have to walk to the light, it's dark when they get there in the early morning hours, there's not very good lighting, they have to cross a, a main street on a fast light to get to their high school. Tragedy is going to happen. So I have to say that I agree with the mayor completely. We need to rethink our transportation plan in Sterling Heights and think about ways to build our roads for people and not traffic. And I'm thinking about Fifteen Mile and Ryan, I'm thinking about Dodge Park and Fifteen Mile Road. I mean, the cars that stack up to turn left on Dodge Park from Fifteen Mile go past the start of my subdivision. I can't turn left in my subdivision, because cars are stacked beyond Dryden to, to go left. And that doesn't make any sense, that's where you have those crossings that create accidents. You know, you know, we already talked about Stevenson, a girl got hit in the crosswalk earlier this year. Now, we have to rethink Dodge Park, we need to rethink how we're getting people from A to B. Otherwise, tragedy ensues. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Zarco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just want to clarify something that I said about employing people, because I don't want to get nasty grams, and I certainly don't want to get beat up in social media. But I think that we are more focused now on work-life balance, and I think that's a good thing. I think that there's a way, as employers, that we consider how valuable our employees' time is, especially with their families. So, and I think that's the focus anymore with what we need to think about is whether it be comp time or whether it be less hours, but certainly that should be our focus, is work-life balance, because we want families to stay together. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else? You know, to that point, I, I think what it shows is that, you know, you can always say, oh, kids these days are different than when I was. And, and that's been really proven to be a bunch of bunk. It's not. It's funny, I watched a video where they were saying like all the things that we say about kids who are on devices, they were saying it about kids when, like, written books came out, when you could go get books. Like, they were saying, oh, this is it, this is the end, kids are never going to, you know, because they're just going to have their heads buried in magazines and books. So they've been saying that for, for decades. But what we are seeing, I think, is that now more than ever, you can get what you want almost instantaneously. You can, and that, that really never occurred before in, in society, where you could almost instantaneously have something. If you want, if I want somebody to drive me home, I could have somebody here in five minutes that is going to drive me home. If I want groceries to be at my house, groceries will be at my house in two hours. You know, so with, with, when we talk about sustainability, we have to think about a population that's going to be changing. Our kids, my kids, are not going to be driving cars the same way. You know, deliveries aren't going to happen the same way. So we, as Mr. Radke said, we really have to think about building streets in a way that are going to accommodate a totally different transportation model. We have to think about delivering services to people who are used to getting things instantaneously. You know, this, the old model that we're all used to is just not going to cut it anymore as we move forward in the future. So, so that's where I think with this, what, what the, the lesson we, we've learned, and I think the, the great brilliance of what we're doing here today is being forward-thinking and saying, we are going to look for those opportunities to make sure that we're delivering services to people in a way that's sustainable for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, because that's what we've been doing in Sterling Heights, we've been progressive, forward-thinking. And so proud of the meeting and all the presentations and the work, very hard work and effort put in by all the employees tonight. So we thank you very much, and our residents thank you for that as well. If there's, I guess we're going to move on to communications from citizens. So is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item, not on tonight's agenda? And tonight's agenda encompasses everything that has to do with the city, and you have to stay on city business, so. All right, I guess we'll make an exception for you, Ms. Early.
Jasmine Early from Sterling Heights, thank you. On January twenty-third, speaking about issues, Planning Commissioner Jeff Garapi stated that Mayor Michael Taylor has suggested on Facebook that it is a time for serious considerations on a roundabout on Fifteen Mile and Ryan, and that is the reason why I want to talk about it. Several people expressed their concern about the idea that you want to, which was not talked at all in this meeting. They would like to have, you need to reach out to the residents, because this became a really big issue in the last few days. It's a petition out there, which by the time I checked, it was only ninety-three signatures. But also, I checked the people that opposed to that idea, and it was, they were over a hundred people. My suggestion to the council and mayor is, let's do a public forum. I had driven that road for almost twelve years. I went and took videos of the roundabout on eighteen and a half and the one here in Dodge Park. We are talking about pedestrian and going back to the importance of taking care of the pedestrian. Well, one of the, the crosscar brought this important point, what about the kids crossing? If we had a roundabout, the issue on Fifteen Mile and Ryan, it will be increase the liability for those kids crossing the street, especially in the afternoon hours. It doesn't seem to be a great idea. Eighteen and a half and Van Dy runabout is listed as the second most dangerous runabout, runabout in Michigan. We need to talk about it, we need to bring this to the table and let the resident express their concern, and those who agree also be able to express it. I find interesting also that each one of these runabouts already done, I took a video, I walked while I was doing my little research, the people driving will not stop for the pedestrian. They didn't care that I was trying to cross, I had to wait. And I grew up in cities that the population is ten million people, I live in Bogota. So I know how to cross a street in a traffic that is busy. What people are suggesting is to educate the, the drivers. It's a big, big issue in our city, and that was the issue, the problem why accidents increased. So now suggesting that, oh, the runabout will have less accidents, less people will die, but it's not a solution. So I'm asking you the favor to set up a public forum regarding your idea about planning to build a runabout on Fifteen and, Fifteen Mile Road in Ryan. And by the way, just a quick comment, you want to build bicycles, I mean, lines for bicycles, but you don't consider the weather. I don't know how many people will be driving, will be riding the bikes when the temperatures are pretty low. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Early. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, close that portion. Do we have reports from?
We don't.
City administration on our agenda?
It's a mistake on this time.
So I guess that's it, unless anybody else has any other comments, anything else? I'll just say quickly, yeah, so I've talked to Mr. Vanderpoel about Fifteen Mile and Ryan and convening, you know, a public forum to, to, or some sort of a, a campaign to figure out what's going to work there, because the current setup is not working. And it's not so much just the Fifteen Mile and Ryan intersection, it's also, especially east of Ryan, you have so many, so many ingress egress to those businesses there. And when they're crossing with the neighbors to the north, on the north side of Fifteen Mile Road, it really is a problem. And I think we have to do something about maybe ray turns only on the south side of Fifteen Mile. I think we should look into a roundabout. I, I wish that when I said something like, I wish if I said to my kids, you know, we should, you should clean your room, there was as much outcry as there is when I say we need a roundabout at Fifteen Mile Road. I say that, you kids, you need to clean the room. They don't, they look at, they don't, it goes right in one ear, out the other. I say we should put a roundabout at Fifteen Mile Road. It's like the end, the world is ending. So we're going to look at it, we're not doing anything right away. We're going to look at all options available to make that intersection safe and better for the residents and the, the motorists there, so that we can do something. I told Mr. Vanderpoel, we don't have an option, we have to do something, we have to help the people in that area to make sure that that's a safe intersection. So we're on it, and stay tuned.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke.
Question for you?
Sure.
Have we, do we have a traffic study done on the Fifteen Mile and Ryan?
I'm not sure. Mr. Vanderpoel?
Mayor, we do have a traffic study done on that. We've made a number of improvements, but what I'll do is I'll get an update to city[1764.72]